Alright, I guess it's seven o'clock. Let's go ahead and start our very first virtual city council meeting. So I'm called into session the May, the March twenty-third, uh, twenty twenty city council meeting for the city of Tuolton. As you see, we're all virtual, uh, all the city councillors are present for this meeting, uh, being held via Zoom, and this is uncharted territory for us. Uh, we practiced a little bit today, but we'll see how well we do today. Um, I'm gonna skip the pledge of allegiance, which is kinda tough to do since we don't all have flags in our houses, I guess, to pledge to. So we'll move on to announcements, and our first announcement is the Arbor Week proclamation. I'm gonna ask, uh, councillor Valerie Pratt to go ahead and read that proclamation.
Declaring the week of April fifth to April eleventh, two thousand twenty as Arbor Week in the city of Tuolton. Whereas Arbor Day is a celebration observed throughout the nation and the world in which individuals and groups are encouraged to plant, care for, and celebrate the many values of trees. And Arbor Day is observed in the state of Oregon during the first week of April, which this year will be April fifth through eleventh, two thousand twenty, and whereas healthy trees reduce the erosion of topsoil by wind and water, moderate the temperature, calm traffic, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and our renewable resource giving us paper and countless other wood products. And whereas trees beautify our community, increase property values, and enhance the economic vitality of business areas in Tuolton, and thousands of trees and shrubs are planted by volunteers in Tuolton Sparklands every year. And whereas two thousand twenty marks the thirty-third consecutive year of Tuolton as a cert, has been certified as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for following best practices in community forestry management. Now therefore, it be proclaimed by the city council of the city of Tuolton, Oregon, that the city of Tuolton designates the week of April fifth to eleventh, two thousand twenty as Arbor Week in the city of Tuolton. All citizens are urged to support efforts to protect and plant trees to glad the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. The citizens of Tuolton support the Oregon Department of Forestry and the National Arbor Day Foundation in the recognition of the value of trees and forests by proclaiming April fifth through eleventh, two thousand twenty as Arbor Week in Tuolton. Introduced and adopted this twenty-third day of March, two thousand twenty.
Right, thank you. Uh, next up is our community development proclamation, read by councillor Bridget Brooks.
Thanks. Declaring April thirteenth through seventeenth, twenty twenty as Community Development Week in the city of Tuolton. Whereas the week of April thirteenth through April seventeenth, twenty twenty has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program. And whereas the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low-end and moderate-income people. And whereas the Home Investment Partnerships Home Program provides funding to local communities to create decent, safe, affordable housing opportunities for low-income persons. Nationally, over one million units of affordable housing have been completed using home funds. And whereas, over the program's history, our community has received a total of one million eight hundred and ten thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars in CDBG funds. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the city council of the city of Tuolton, Oregon that the week April thirteenth through seventeen, twenty twenty is National Community Development Week. In support of these two valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality of our community. The council urges Congress and the administration to recognize outstanding work being done locally and nationally by the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnerships Program by supporting increased funding for both programs in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Introduced and adopted this twenty-third day of March, two thousand twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so next up is public comment. Uh, and citizen comment, this is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in, uh, the poll center who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. I'm assuming there's no one there?
Correct.
Alright, so we'll move on to consent agenda. Uh, tonight, the consent agenda is, these items are considered routine, they will be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. The consent agenda consists of item one, consideration of approval of the regular meeting minutes of March ninth, twenty twenty. Item two, consideration of approval of late liquor license renewals for twenty twenty. Item three, consideration of resolution number five four eight four dash two zero, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Clean Water Services for construction of the Nyberg Sanitary Sewer Trunk Line rehabilitation. And finally, number four, the annual report of the Tuolton Library Advisory Committee. Is there anyone who would like something removed, consent, and heard separately tonight?
Uh, actually, I have, uh, something I'd like to chat with first before we move forward. And no, it's not what you guys think. I would like to table, I'd like to pull the, um, Tuolton Library Advisory Committee report and table that under the assumption that it's something I, I would like to have them do in person. Um, perhaps when it's more appropriate, or is that, and this question really is to Cheryl, and is that not something that we can, um, realistically do, you know, in a month or two months?
Uh, thank you for the question, councillor. Um, I checked with Jeranne Thompson, so this was scheduled to be on consent, if even if the council was meeting at the poll center because there was nobody from the Library Advisory Committee that wanted to come present.
No, I understand that. I, I understand that. I'm talking about when all this is over down, you know, in, in, let's just say in ninety days. Is this something that we want, and I, I apologize in advance, I should have discussed this with you on Friday, and I forgot, um, to bring it up. Um, is this something we wanna do, to allow them to do in, you know, ninety days, or is that just, we don't, we just wanna keep moving on?
It certainly, um, you can ask them to come and present it in ninety days. Um, I would suggest that you adopt the, the annual report and then ask, make a request to them to come make a presentation after all this is over, and we may wanna do that anyway, um, like city operations committees, commissions.
Okay.
And just to give a presentation to.
I'm sorry, just, just to chime in, so, uh, by, by city code, it's most, it's supposed to be filed with the, the council, uh, by April first.
Okay, uh, that's fine, we can discuss this, we, I have no objection to the consent agenda then.
Okay, I mean, we can certainly put the invitation out for them to come back in ninety days or so. Um, I know certain committees like to do their committee annual reports in person, and some committees do not. I guess it's the personality of the committee members. Okay, so what we're gonna do tonight, since, um, you know, we'll do a normal, uh, motions in seconds, but I just touched my face, that's strike number one on me. Is, uh, Nicole's requested we do roll call votes on all votes tonight, so remember, we'll keep that in mind.
Okay, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay.
I have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda as read, any discussion on the motion? Alright, do a roll call vote, and I'll just go by the who I see first here, councillor Brooks.
Aye.
Councillor Pratt.
Aye.
Councillor Reyes.
Yes.
Councillor Klog.
Aye.
Councillor Grimes.
Aye.
Councillor Morrison.
Yep.
And the mayor votes yes also. Alright, it's approved. Alright, moving on to public hearings, this is, this is a quasi-judicial, uh, hearing. Item number one, consideration of ordinance number one four three zero dash two zero. An ordinance annexing territory located at two three six two zero, comma, two three seven four zero, southwest Boonsbury Road, and nine one eight five, nine three three five, nine four one five, southwest Green Hill Lane, tax map, two S, one three five D, lots four hundred, four hundred and one, five hundred, five hundred and one, six hundred, eight hundred, and nine hundred into the city of Tuolton, annexing portions of southwest Lower Boonsbury Road, withdrawing the territory from the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District, and annexing, annexing territory into the boundary of Clean Water Services, ANN dash one nine dash zero zero two. I have some instructions to read per the Oregon Legislature. So this is again a quasi-judicial hearing. The state legislature requires the following information to be read, ORS one nine seven dot seven six three sub five and six, and ORS one nine seven dot seven nine six three B. Item one, criteria for approval of proposed annexation are, A, city-initiated annexation only when petitioned by their property owners, TDC four dot zero five zero. B, the property is contiguous to the city or separated from it only by a public right-of-way or stream, ORS two 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 dot zero zero zero. C, where the annexation is consistent with directly applicable criteria or boundary changes in the Metro Code, I, an urban service provider agreement or annexation plan adopted under ORS one nine five dash zero six five, II, urban and planning or other agreement other than those under ORS one nine five dot zero six five between the affected entity and the necessary party, III, comprehensive plan and public facility plans, IV, reg, uh, regional park framework plan or functional plan, V, whether the pro-subject, I'm sorry, whether the proposed change to promote or not interfere with timely order and economic provisions of public facilities and services, and VI, consistency with other applicable criteria for the boundary change in question under state and local law. Item two, testimony and evidence must be directed toward the above criteria or those criteria in the Development Code which you believe apply to this decision. Item three, the judicial documents or evidence is provided in support of the application. Any party shall be entitled to a continuance of the hearing. Item four, unless there is a certain, unless there's a continuance before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, a participant may request before the hearing is closed that the record remain open for at least seven days after the hearing. Item five, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council in a party is an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the land use boards of appeals based on that issue. The failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow this council to respond to the issue precludes and action for damages in circuit court. The hearing will begin with the city staff report, followed by testimony in favor of the application, followed by opposition to the application. Rebuttal will then be permitted. Then the hearing will reclose, and the council will deliberate towards a decision. If any council member wishes to announce any potential conflict of interest, bias, or ex parte contact, they should do so now. Okay, I did have a conversation with Grace Lucchini on February fourteenth uh, via phone where we discussed the annexation process, the properties involved, and the, um, Washington County right-of-way as well as, uh, her, um, understanding of part of her property was part of that right-of-way that needed to be included in the annexation. And I don't feel that biases me in any way. Anyone else? Alright, so let's go ahead and start off with the staff report.
Hold on, sorry, I was on mute and didn't realize it. I had, since you, I, I don't know the extent of our exposure, I have exchanged emails with Grace regarding visiting her property, and, um, because of, um, all the events in the last two weeks, that visit was postponed, but we have not discussed the issues, it was strictly to see her property, and that was never accomplished.
Okay. Anyone else?
Oh, well.
Alright, Valerie.
I, I, I spoke with Grace, I, I went to her property several months ago. And, uh, I suppose the annexation was mentioned briefly, but it was more to see her property and other issues, and I don't feel, it would bias me in my decision here.
Is that everyone? Alright, so let's go ahead and hear from city staff.
Good evening, mayor and councillors, my name is Erin England, associate planner, and tonight I will be discussing case file ANN nineteen dash zero zero two for the Autumn Sunrise Annexation. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge that public comments have been received from Grace Lucchini after the packet was posted to the web, and they are included as exhibit C. The applicant has also provided a copy of their presentation today, which was shared with others who have commented on the application. Now I'll move on to slide number two. Um, this matter is continued from the January twenty-seventh hearing to discuss the annexation of approximately thirty-eight acres of land into the city of Tuolton. And then moving on to slide three, there's an aerial overview of the subject property. And this property is contiguous with its Tuolton city limits and is within unincorporated Washington County. It is located in the Basalt Creek area, south of Horizon High School and west of I five. The overall site can be described as generally flat farmland. And then moving on to slide four, the applicant Stafford Development Company on behalf of Autumn Sunrise requests approval to annex seven tax lots comprising approximately thirty-six point six two acres of private property and approximately one point three eight acres of adjacent Boonsbury Road right-of-way to Centerline. If approved for annexation, the subject properties would be withdrawn from the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District and designated a combination of medium-low-density residential and neighborhood commercial planning districts as shown on the community plan map that was included as exhibit B. At this time, no development is proposed. We move on to slide five, you can see the future zoning designations if it was annexed within the city. And then moving on to slide six, before granting the proposed annexation, the city council must find that the annexation conforms to the applicable criteria listed on this slide. Staff has included an analysis and findings as exhibit three, and has found that the annexation meets all the applicable criteria in the Tuolton Development Code, as well as Metro Code and Oregon regulatory statute. We move on to slide seven. Staff recommends that city council approve file number ANN nineteen dash zero zero two and adopt ordinance fourteen thirty dash twenty. And if we move to slide eight, it lists out the council options where you can move to approve the case violent ordinance as drafted, deny the application, or continue discussion of the application. And with that, I open it up to any questions or discussion.
I have a, I have a question, if I can, thank you, um. I noticed part of, there was a public meeting that was held to talk about the development with residents and concerned citizens. And someone had, uh, brought up a question about would there be an, an additional in-and-out way to the new neighborhood that would go up behind or next to Horizon Christian? Is, can someone explain to me where it would go, or how that would work, or if that is going to be part of the process?
So that would be, um, through a separate process, once they come in for their subdivision application.
Okay.
You, um, the roadway network that they're proposing, and the traffic study that they include as part of their application.
Okay, I wish, okay. Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna invite the applicant and give them the opportunity to provide any evidence or testimony in support of this application.
Am I on, can you hear me? For, you can hear me, great. Uh, for the record, my name is Levi Lavassa, I'm with project manager for Stafford Development Company, uh, the applicant, and, uh, thank you all for being here tonight and allowing us to present this annexation application. Uh, I'm not sure if you guys got it, hopefully, I had put together a brief PowerPoint just to give a little bit of background. Um, and it's hopefully in PDF format or a PowerPoint where you can scroll through. Um, also for the record, address, uh, for Stafford Development Company is eight eight four zero southwest Holly Lane, Wilsonville, Oregon, nine seven zero seven zero. Um, so this is a process that has been going on for a really long time, as many of you know. Uh, some probably more than others, and, uh, for anybody listening in.
Hello?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yep.
You first, Sarah.
Um, and so this started a long time ago with the expansion of the UGB in two thousand and four. Uh, fast forward many years later to the adoption of the Basalt Creek Concept Plan, uh, which you can see on the second slide. Uh, and that was recently adopted by the city of, uh, Tuolton last year and implemented through the comprehensive plan. And as you can see in that slide, it identifies this site specifically. Sure, most of you are aware of where this is at this point, but, uh, once the Basalt Creek Concept Plan was adopted, the comprehensive plan implemented it, uh, the zoning, uh, that Tuolton had designated prior to this, the Tuolton has a one map system, so a community plan map. And, uh, the property included in this annexation is identified on slide three showing that it is RML and residential medium-low-density, and neighborhood commercial. So, once we're annexed into the city, uh, then this is the zoning that would apply. Just to be clear, on the fourth slide, I included the legal description for anybody that didn't have a chance to see that in the exhibits further down, it's thirty-eight acres total, thirty-six point six two acres of real property, uh, and one point three eight acres of right-of-way. Um, part of what was brought up by the public comments, uh, that received an email earlier today was some of the early-on confusion about what property in the right-of-way is still owned by the neighboring properties. So it took a couple, couple goes with our surveyor and county cartography to find out what property underneath Boonsbury Road is really supposed to be included with an annexation, and so uh, that's what you see before you now, any issues earlier on in the previous hearing that was scheduled, have been resolved. And, uh, this is the accurate map that has been certified by Clackamas County. Uh, so it is in fact thirty-eight acre, yeah, Washington County, thirty-eight acres, uh, total with one point three eight acres in the right-of-way. Um, then on to the next page, you can see the tax map clearly identifying the seven tax lots that are included. Um, this is obviously continuous to the Tuolton city limits. Um, zoom in a little bit closer, and you can see that Boonsbury Road has a pretty unique right-of-way shape, so that, uh, was part of the problem coming up with what part of this should be included. But, uh, got that all squared away now, and then on the last slide, you can see uh, it's an existing conditions map, just trying to give an aerial, and it identifies that there's three single-family residences on the these seven tax lots. And after annexation, this use will not change. Uh, just to be clear right now, this is an annexation application only. Um, any concerns for stormwater, or, which I know is a hot topic from the public comment that we receive, any issue with traffic, stormwater, sewer, all of those things, uh, will be part of, uh, a future application. And, um, so right now, we're just focusing on what is really considered a minor boundary change, uh, by the Metro Code. So, our application exemplifies that all the different criteria have been met in the ORS, the TDC, and Metro Code, so we request that you approve the annotation. Um, and I'm going to step away, and Gordon Root, who many of you are probably familiar with, is going to say a few words as well.
Okay.
Thank you, mayor and councillors, it's a long time coming. My name's Gordon Root, I'm with Stafford Development, Autumn Sunrise. Um, I'm just really glad we're at this point. You know, this property was brought in to help with the build of the land needed in two thousand and four, and it's anticipated, uh, a long way. I will say it's probably one of the most robust and frequent-meetinged planning area that I've been involved with in all my years in the development business. In addition to the public meetings, we've had a couple of different meetings with the, uh, neighboring property owners uh, in order to bring everyone up to speed, make sure they're all there. But I'm just, uh, here watching, you know, the historic first-time virtual meeting for the city council, I guess, as well, and I think we're, I hope that we're historic as well in beginning to annex the property in Basalt Creek so that we can move forward with providing a diversity of housing here in Tuolton.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, uh, anyone else in the poll center who, uh, would like to give testimony in support of the application?
There's no one else here.
Okay. Alright, now I will, we'll hear from those who are opposed to the application. Sue and Megan, there's no one there?
Yep, still nobody here.
Alright, uh, with that, do councillors have questions?
Well, I'll go, um.
Great.
Okay, so, um, I, I'm sure everyone, I don't know if everyone had, I'm sure everyone had an opportunity to read the email that we received from citizens, and one of the critiques was around CCI committees um, and our responsibility to have those as a council. So I was just wondering if somebody could address that, I had a question on that as far as our city responsibility, thank you.
Uh, which, but I can go ahead and address that. Um, so the CCI is, um, if I remember the initials correctly, it's something along the lines of a, as citizen, it's supposed to fulfill a citizen engagement committee for state goal, uh, land use goal number one. And so in our code, I believe, the community plan, we have designated, the city of Tuolton designated the Planning Commission as that CCI. Um, that was done, I believe, in the late seventies, and it was necessary in order for the Department of Land Use and Conservation to acknowledge our, um, community plan. Um, at that time, in the late seventies, it was actually referred to as the Tuolton Planning Advisory Committee. And then around two thousand eleven or twelve, the Planning Advisory Committee, uh, became the Planning Commission. And that, uh, committee, that the Planning Commission today still serves that role as the CCI.
Um, so I guess the critique that we received was, um, that if there were citizens that live in the area that are impacted, involved in that committee, or that there was, uh, neutral a party, I just don't know what our, first of all, our legal responsibilities are, and then also our, um, um, I, I think good steward responsibilities, I mean, I do think it was fair that um, that some of this stuff could have been caught if the people that we know that are interested were involved before it was posted, so I, I, I would just like to think about a way that um, we make sure that, that even if they don't live in the city yet, if they're people that are affected by annexing, the community, um, feedback is, you know, um, available.
Certainly, and just one, one comment, and then I think Erin has a, something to add. What is unique about this situation is that an annexation for this one property is quasi-judicial, which means that we follow a certain set of rules for public engagement and for noticing. And so that engagement is much different, and it's actually much less than, say, the Comprehensive Plan amendments where we do, do a lot of community outreach and feedback. And then with quasi-judicial, it's basically saying, if you meet these criteria, then you can move on. And in some cases, you know, we can add conditions of approval. But with that being said, I, I do hear your concerns and wanting us to be cognizant of the public and community members who may be interested in these applications.
Thank you.
And I can clarify a bit more for our development code navigating requirements. This particular property owner and owners within a thousand feet of the boundary of the subject property received a notice of the hearing twenty days prior to the hearing. And that notice stated that the agenda packet would be available online a week prior to the hearing. So per our development code, we do allow opportunities for these interested property owners to review the application materials prior to the hearing if they so choose. So I guess, just want to say that that's kind of what our code is about, and that's what we practice in this particular instance.
Other questions?
Okay, I had one other question from the email. There was a part that was noted. I know that the drainage issue is something that we're going to talk about in future time, but the actual annexation property, I was just curious about the little piece that's designated wetlands and what, how we're thinking about that.
I can start on this. Oh, Kim, do you want to take this?
Oh, either Erin or Kim. And you need to unmute yourself, please. The area that is designated wetland, when they go, when they apply for a land use, will have to get a service provider letter from Clean Water Services, and that will point out wetlands and other natural resources that have to be looked at. So we'll capture it at that time.
Thank you. Also, I think we have the same wall color, so I like here.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. So at this point, I'll close the hearing, and we can enter into council deliberations.
Yeah, so I've got questions on the future in terms of the development plans, particularly Washington County's admonishment that there won't be any connection to the extended Bassett Creek Parkway. I thought that was a bit of a surprise. And then also, there were some comments about some of the neighborhood commercial potentially being knocked out for stormwater retention or other things, but those aren't in front of us today. All that's in front of us today is whether or not the ground gets annexed into the city. So with that understanding, I'm going to move to for first reading of ordinance number fourteen thirty dash twenty.
And I'll move second.
I have a motion second to for first reading. Maybe I go back to my other agenda here.
By title only.
By title only of ordinance fourteen thirty dash twenty. I guess we have a roll call vote, so I'll start with Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Kellogg.
Aye.
Counselor Grimes.
Aye.
Counselor Morrison.
Yeah.
I vote aye.
Ordinance number fourteen thirty dash twenty, an ordinance annexing territory located at two three six two zero, two three seven four zero, Southwest Boons Ferry Road, and nine one eight five nine three three five nine four one five, Southwest Green Hill Lane. Tax map two S one three five D, lots four hundred, four hundred and one, five hundred, five hundred and one, six hundred, eight hundred, and nine hundred into the city of Tuolton, annexing portions of Southwest Lower Boons Ferry Road, withdrawing the territory from the Washington County and Hampshire Patrol District and annexing territory into the boundary of Clean Water Services.
I'll move for a second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion second for reading by title only of again, ordinance number fourteen thirty dash twenty. Sorry, Counselor Brooks.
Bridget?
Bridget. We're voting on the second reading by title.
She's on mute.
You're on mute, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll go, we'll start with Counselor Pratt, then. Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Aye.
You just said aye, all right.
Aye.
All right, Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Kellogg.
Aye.
Counselor Grimes.
Aye.
Counselor Morrison.
Yeah.
I vote yes also.
Ordinance number fourteen thirty dash twenty, an ordinance annexing territory located at two three six two zero, two three seven four zero, Southwest Boons Ferry Road, and nine one eight five nine three three five nine four one five, Southwest Green Hill Lane. Tax map two S one three five D, lots four hundred, four hundred and one, five hundred, five hundred and one, six hundred, eight hundred, and nine hundred into the city of Tuolton, annexing portions of Southwest Boons Ferry Road, withdrawing the territory from the Washington County and Hampshire Patrol District and annexing territory into the boundary of Clean Water Services, ANN dash nineteen dash zero 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 two. That motion to adopt ordinance number fourteen thirty dash twenty.
I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number fourteen thirty dash twenty. I'll start with Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Kellogg.
Aye.
Counselor Grimes.
Aye.
Counselor Morrison.
Yeah.
And I vote yes. So ordinance number fourteen thirty dash twenty is passed. All right.
Congratulations.
Yep. All right, moving on to general business.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Moving on to general business, item number one, consideration of ordinance number one four three three dash twenty, an ordinance relating to public meetings and amending Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter one dash zero four.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't know if you would like a brief presentation. If you would, I'm sure Sean would be happy to let you know what's going on, but I, I think you all are, are up to speed on we're happy to provide a brief presentation.
Would anyone like to hear a brief summary from Sean?
Well, I think it might be good is, my, I think it might be good, sorry, I don't know why I keep muting. I think it might be good. This, especially for public information.
Okay.
I agree, agree.
Okay. Ordinance number fourteen thirty three dash twenty is an ordinance relating to public meetings, and it, it is proposing to amend the Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter one dash zero four. In particular, under Tuolton's current code, special meetings in Tuolton require forty-eight hours prior written, or excuse me, prior advance notice. That's to the public, to the newspapers, and everything else in compliance with Oregon Public Records Law. However, under Oregon's Public Records Law, special meetings only require twenty-four hours notice. What's important here is that special meetings include emergency meetings. So if the, if the council was to call an emergency meeting as the, as the code is currently provides, it requires forty-eight hours notice. And so what this change would do is put Tuolton's code in line with state public meetings laws. And again, this is the minimum required notice. This, this doesn't prevent the city from providing more notice when we know of a meeting that's going to occur. And then to go along with this, at the next, the next agenda item is an amendment to the council rules as well. So if you pass this ordinance, the next agenda item is a resolution to amend those council rules to account for that same provision.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, discussion?
I have a comment. It seems that, you know, this is something that came on a little late, so I didn't have a chance to talk with anybody about it. So previously, we tied to the public meetings law, and then we got out of whack because the public meetings law changed, right? And so what if public meetings laws change again? And I'm not saying we, we don't pass on this tonight, but going forward, if we want to have a period that says, you know, we can do it instantaneously based on an emergency, I'd feel more confident if we establish language like that instead of saying we're relying on state statutes because if those change in the future and we don't keep up, then we're not, you know, getting what we want out of this. So again, I don't think it needs to be changed tonight. I'm happy to look at adopting this, but just going forward, and I'd welcome your, your response to that, Sean.
Yes, so this, this, this amendment strikes the, the difference in, in any specificity related to the, to special meetings. And it just adds a simple provision that says that, that, that we will follow Oregon, Oregon Public Meetings Law. So as the law changes, we should not have to change the code at all to keep up. I, I doubt that the law will change, but if it does, you know, with respect to the notice provisions, but if it does, we automatically can, can comply with those without, without having to further change the code.
Okay, fair enough. I don't want to be the, you know, perfect being the enemy of the good here. I think where we're trying to go is where we're going to get. And so I'm, I'm happy to move for adoption of ordinance number fourteen thirty three dash twenty.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to
Pardon me, motion for first reading of ordinance by title only, fourteen thirty three dash twenty.
Second. Yeah, okay.
So I have a motion second for reading by title only of ordinance number fourteen three three dash twenty. Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Kellogg.
Aye.
Counselor Grimes.
Aye.
Counselor Morrison.
No.
I vote aye. So what's the rule now, Sean, with?
So that, that was a motion for reading by title only. So so because of that, it has to be a the, the motion itself can go forward unless one of the councilors object to the reading of the ordinance. So if any of the councilors object to, to just reading the ordinance by title only, then I have to read the whole, whole ordinance.
Okay.
So can I ask another question, please? Yeah, so we kind of cut off the discussion pretty quick here. I, I'm not in favor of making the change right now. Maybe down the road with a little more information and a little more background. It just seems we went through council rules, it seems like yesterday. And we were aware of this difference at that point in time. And I get that there are a lot of councilors who are no longer with us, new councilors who weren't a part of the council rules, who just are seeing it, maybe for the first time, or when they first ran for election last year, were given a copy of it, or in Valerie's case, a couple of months ago. So I get all that. I just felt forty-eight hours was, at the time of the council was, was a long enough period of time, and didn't see the need to change it back then. And I, I still don't necessarily see a reason to change it. So that said, I don't want to have us sit here and have stuff read for however long it takes. At the same time that I, I do want it known that I would prefer this, we're going to have this discussion, it's something that we discussed. You know, a work session and, and kind of get a consensus and then move forward. That would be my opinion. So I'm, so if, if all I'm going to do is make Sean read everything, and then we're going to vote anyway today, then I, I, I can amend my vote. I just need clarification on that, Sean.
Yeah, so, so the first motion is just to read by title. The, if, if any of the councilors object to that, then I have to read the whole ordinance. Luckily, this one's small, so it's not that big of a deal. But, but if you do vote against the ordinance when it comes up for a vote for, for enactment, then it would have to come back for a second reading, or excuse me, essentially a third reading, but a second meeting to be voted on because it is not voted unanimously.
Okay, fair enough. Then I'll, I'll, I'll forego the reading of the, of title and for title only.
All right. So we got, looks like we have unanimous vote for reading by title only, the first motion on that for first reading.
I can go ahead and read the, read the ordinance if that's okay. Ordinance number fourteen
Or answer the title.
Yeah, because Paul.
The title, yeah, ordinance by title.
Okay.
Ordinance number fourteen thirty three dash twenty, an ordinance relating to public meetings and amending Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter one dash zero four.
I'll move for a second reading and title only.
Second.
I have a motion second for second reading by title only of ordinance number of four, one four three three dash two zero. Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Kellogg.
Aye.
Counselor Grimes.
Aye.
Counselor Morrison.
Yeah.
And I vote aye.
Ordinance number fourteen thirty three dash twenty, an ordinance relating to public meetings and amending Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter one dash zero four.
I move to accept ordinance number fourteen dash, oh, fourteen thirty three dash twenty.
Second.
Motion second to adopt ordinance one four three three dash two zero. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Kellogg.
Aye.
Counselor Grimes.
Aye.
Counselor Morrison.
No.
And I vote yes. So that's six to one in approval of adopting the ordinance.
So, so just to clarify, because this was to go into effect immediately to allow for, you know, any, any emergency meetings that would happen rather soon if that occurred. We have to bring this back to the next regularly scheduled council meeting for another, for, to get it adopted.
Correct.
Okay. So we'll agendize it for the April thirteenth meeting.
Thank you.
And as long as we're at it, Sean, can I ask a quick question? With the benefit of having the city charter available online, what is the effect of chapter four, section thirteen? It seems to already say that special meetings of the council may be held in accordance with procedures prescribed by state law.
Oh.
That, that is correct. So, but what, what we have done in Tuolton is gone beyond state law and required forty-eight hours notice when state law only requires twenty-four. There, there's no there's, that's the only, the only thing that we're really changing in this provision. We added a sentence at to zero one zero just to just so we didn't have a zero two zero, I guess. We added a sentence at, at zero, one, zero, just to, uh, just so we didn't have a zero, two, zero, I guess, uh, without anything else. So that was the reason for the change to the zero, one, zero section. Um, but yes, so we have to follow state law, but we, by, by current code, have restricted ourselves, uh, in, in the forty-eight hour notice provision.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
All right. So moving on to item number two in general business, it's consideration of resolution number of five, four, eight, six, dash, two, zero, amending Rule two of the council rules. As Sean mentioned, this is associated with item number one. Uh, do folks have any questions about this resolution?
It looks like Valerie had a question from the last time.
Well, they're both related. I just, um, wanted to make the point that, um, in our current situation with the COVID nineteen, I think, um, that it might be pertinent that we have the ability to call meetings in a shorter timeframe, given that it seems like every day is a week's worth of events, stuff happening in advance. Well, just for everybody's consideration, I know it's, um, waiting till the next meeting, but my thoughts on it.
Yeah, no, I totally agree, Valerie. I think that's a really sound, you know, point. My suggestion is that you defer Resolution fifty-four eighty-six dash twenty to April thirteenth as well. Well, yeah, associated with the ordinance.
Yeah, so I'll move to table, uh, Resolution fifty-four eighty-six dash twenty, uh, until our next meeting.
Second.
I have a motion as second to table Resolution number fifty-four eighty-six dash twenty till our next regular city council mem- meeting. Councilor Brooks?
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Um, is it the same kind of a process where if somebody disagrees, we have to wait another week?
The two have to be in sync. So we, you know, if we approve this, and then it fails in two weeks, and the two, the council rules, and the, uh, ordinance will be out of sync.
So Councilor Brooks, the, um, just to interrupt, the, the reason it has to be unanimous tonight is because it was the first and second reading. If we bring it back on April thirteenth, it doesn't have to be unanimous, it only has to be by a majority.
Okay.
As does the resolution.
Correct.
Right? It doesn't have to be unanimous.
Aye.
Right.
Okay, Council Pratt?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Well, may I ask a question? Just, um, so if it's twenty-four hours, do we have to wait until April thirteenth in order for us to, uh, if there's an emergency that happens in the next two weeks?
We have forty-eight hours.
We still have forty, we're back on forty-eight hours cuz of previous resolution. But, okay, understood. Aye.
Okay, Council Kellogg?
Aye.
Council Grimes?
Aye.
Council Morrison?
Yeah.
And I vote aye also. Okay. Moving on to item number three, consideration of Resolution number of five, four, eight, seven, dash, twenty, delegating authority to the Tuolton Development Commission to establish an economic stabilization program for businesses impacted by COVID nineteen. I believe, uh, Jonathan Taylor is up for a overview of this item.
Yes, thank you, before Jonathan starts, um, uh, so there's two items on the Development Commission, um, that are related to this as well. So, um, Jonathan is gonna make one presentation tonight, uh, under this item, and then, um, the, under the Development Commission meeting, we won't do a duplicate presentation. This will be the only piece of the presentation.
Right. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, members of council, and those watching at home. Uh, this is a, this is, uh, an extraordinary time. So tonight, the resolution before council at the present time is a resolution establishing, um, or excuse me, delegating authority to the Tuolton Development Commission to authorize grant funding. Uh, this is allowed by Oregon State Statute five, four, seven, but emerging these kind of presentations together, council tonight is gonna delegate authority to the Tuolton Development Commission to provide grant funding in form of economic stabilization grants, up to ten thousand dollars for qualified businesses. In the staff report, um, you noticed that, um, Governor Kate Brown has issued two executive orders, one last Monday, and then one today, that has drastically affected most of our retail and hospitality businesses. Nearly twenty percent of Tuolleton's current workforce is employed in the retail and hospitality sector. This accounts for a normal total annual payroll of a hundred and forty-five million dollars. As of last Friday, nearly one hundred and forty-five businesses have reduced, altered, or ceased their operations in the city of Tuolleton. And that is a, currently affecting an estimated two thousand eight hundred employees, who have either had their hours altered, reduced, or have been laid off or furloughed. In the regional governor's, uh, economic team meeting last week, we won't know the full impact until May twenty-fourth, when the April numbers will be released. So tonight, the resolution before you, as well as the resolutions before the Tuolton Development Commission, is to provide a program called the Economic Stabilization Fund. Um, so the Tuolton Development Commission will commit up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in non-tax increment funds to this program that will provide working grant funds in the amounts of ten thousand dollars to qualified businesses. This grant may be used for any operating expense deemed necessary to sustain the current workforce as feasible or maintain an operating physical presence within Tuolleton. The businesses must meet all of the following. Uh, designated business categories under mandatory service change, as of today. Uh, businesses with fifty-five or less full-time employees or equivalent. The businesses must have a physical storefront established in Tuolleton. The business must experience a loss of income due to COVID nineteen. Must be in operations for two years or more. And with recent discussions of city management, as well as council discussions, we have changed non-franchises to no national chains. National chains are defined as franchises or for-profit corporations that are not headquartered in the state of Oregon or Washington County, except in the case where the franchisee or the brand has a Tuolleton-based owner, and the brand has no more than one location within the Tuolleton city limits at the completion of this grant. As the program will be operated, they will submit an online application at tuolton.gov slash economic development. If approved, notice of the award will occur within two weeks via email, due to social distancing measures. Grants will be awarded on a first-come, first-served basis, and businesses will submit re- their reimbursement request with the nec- necessary documentation for a grant award amount up to ten thousand dollars. That will be, uh, handled under the Tuolton Development Commission, but tonight's city council action will be delegating the authority for the Tuolton Development Commission to do that type of program.
Gotcha.
All right, I'm sure, I'm sure there's questions.
Questions?
Well, so before the questions, I just wanna say how much I appreciate the team, Jonathan, Aquila, Sean, um, really jumping on this and pulling it together, and, um, having the foresight to be able to, and creativity to, uh, pull something like this together in really twenty-four hours. And, um, so I'm, I'm sure there'll be questions, but I just wanna say thank you, Jonathan, thank you, Sean, thank you, Aquila for, and Dawn, also for, um, your good work on this.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, so Jonathan, just a point of clarification with respect to franchisees. And I, I, again, I'm using this as an example. I have no idea if they're even interested in it, but it just, it's something I happen to have some knowledge of, and I wanna figure out how this all works. And I'm speaking specifically of a franchise. In this case, say, for example, Firehouse Subs, they have one location in Tuolleton. Um, they employ less than fifty employees. Now, they have multiple chains. They have, uh, another store in Tigard and another store, um, in, um, someplace else. But, so would their local business here in Tuolleton then qualify because they are under fifty-five, and they only have one location? Or because they're a part of a national franchise, they would not qualify?
Good question, Council. Um, so when this question was brought up last Friday about, you know, these are important businesses to our local economy, so we want to factor in those accounts as well. And we reached out to our counterparts in Beaverton and in Portland. So if Firehouse Subs, for example, owned and operated, or this owner who operated the Firehouse Subs in Tuolleton only had one location, they're technically not considered part of a national chain. They are a franchise, but they're a local-based owned business. Now, if the owner of the Firehouse Subs have multiple locations, then they are technically considered a chain by NACIS code. So it gets them a little bit of a legalese, but it, it can be at the direction of the city council, but using best practices, not only from, or not best practices, but programs that have been implemented before. Beaverton, um, Portland, uh, this program specifically has tenants of what Seattle is currently doing. They've, they've just excluded anything that could be considered a chain. So a franchise, it can be a local owner.
Okay, and, and again, I have, I, I'm only using them, having been the restaurant chair for four years at, um, Hazelbrook Middle School, I got to know a lot of these people as we organized them. And so I was just, I'm using them as an example without any knowledge whatsoever that they would even qualify or not. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on who would be eligible. Because in this, in, in Firehouse Subs' case, they're a good example because they live here in Tuolleton, they have kids in the school district. So if they were having financial problems, I would want them to be, you know, able to participate in that, i- if it was something that, you know, they met the criteria of. And I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Jonathan, could you please, um, describe? I know you had a con- conversation with the folks from the Beaverton program and maybe the Seattle program. Could you describe why they excluded franchises?
So at least with the Beaverton model, um, they had mentioned that sometimes franchisees who own more than two or three locations are able to a- access capital at a low-interest loan with their local lending institution. So they're able to put up one or two of their franchisees that they may have as collateral, um, to secure low-interest loans. Now, for a franchisee who only owns one property, they are technically in the same boat as one of our small, local, non-franchise businesses that you would see around the Tuolleton Commons. So, uh, to that question, that's one of the reasons why they excluded those, that they excluded the national chains and kept franchisee being a local-owned based, as opposed to a national chain, which could be multiple franchises. It gets a little technical, I hope I'm making sense, cuz I can't read the rules.
Yeah, no, you, you are. I just wanna clarify for everybody, there is a difference, and I'll use again an example of a McDonald's, and we have, we have a local owner here, uh, he has two locations, and, and McDonald's, um, has publicly acknowledged they are reaching out to support their franchisees. But somebody, and again, I'm, besides, I'll, I'll use Subway, uh, as another example. We have, uh, a franchisee here in Tuolleton, a Subway. Subway does not have a means and is not planning on currently helping their franchisees. I understand the same is true for Jimmy John's. Um, I don't wanna get in the weeds on, on, on the whole thing. I just wanna make sure we, we kind of, don't exclude, cuz some of these smaller franchisees like Subway, they, and I don't, again, I have no direct knowledge that they need any financial support right now, but I wanna make sure that these people have supported our community for a long, long time, certainly Subway. Um, I, I, there's a couple others that could pop to mind, that I don't wanna be excluding them if they are in, in really hurting and have no other ability, other than through this grant, to get some type of financial assistance. That's all.
In the recent addition, which is not in your, uh, council agenda, that could be used for consideration, we could change the, and this is on my notes, an alternate, just in case that this was a discussion. Uh, in defining a no-national chain, it can be where this program allows for the franchise brand has a Tuolleton-based business owner and has no more than one location within the city of Tuolleton city limits. So they could have multiple in the state. Um, or you could set it as no more than two locations. I have various options in here. Uh, just cuz, to be honest with you member, uh, Council Morrison, you know, we're not gonna be able to unfortunately help everyone, but if, if we can't help the ones that have been a part of our community for a longer time. And that also could be where, um, they might get a grant up to their need, which could be five thousand, instead of the ten thousand dollar mark. So there might be ways that we can approve the grant funding for those who may at first be ineligible, based on the reading, or we can craft a policy to where it at least allows a little bit more flexibility based on the need.
So the way you described it with, you know, a single location in the city, I'm very comfortable with that because I believe, based on current knowledge and based on what limited feedback we've gotten, that this covers what we intend to cover. And then I, I, I agree with you, Jonathan. If down, you know, two weeks from now at our next, well, three weeks from now at our next meeting, we discovered that we're excluding, you know, two people who, you know, some business that we somehow didn't mean to eliminate, and I'd be more than happy to revisit. But the way you have explained it to me tonight, I, I'm very satisfied with, um, with, with what you've put together. And again, as the city manager stated earlier, thank you very, very much. You put it together on the fly and very quickly, and I, I certainly appreciate your efforts to do that.
Uh, Jonathan? Um, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Does this have a deadline?
Uh, no.
Like, it could go throughout, through the whole year, or indefinitely, and?
So the only hard stop the program would have would be if the, uh, if the funding runs out.
Okay, so not that long. When does it start, as soon as we approve it, or when does it open to the public?
It will open tomorrow morning, if it's approved by council tonight.
Thank you.
Actually, I have one other question, real quick. I'm sorry, Valerie, I didn't mean to, but my, my last question, that's where. Um, uh, Jonathan, how are you publicize, how are you planning on publicizing this, uh, initiative?
So, uh, in preparation for city council's vote tonight, I've worked with Megan on crafting, uh, several press releases. We've, in, which will go out in the, you know, I'm not too familiar with how we distribute our press releases, but she informed that we have a set of lists that those press releases go out. But we'd also reach out to the chamber, we'd do Facebook posts, we would do those type of things. I think Megan can speak to that.
Yeah, absolutely. So we use a service called Flash Alert, which sends, um, the news release to all of the local newspapers and, um, media rooms within the area that we specify. So we typically send it to the whole Portland metropolitan area. Um, it's, our news releases typically get picked up pretty well by Pamplin especially. Uh, Jonathan, I also talked about publicizing on our website. So if you go to the homepage of our website, there's a rotating banner, so you see three different images that have links. That's, um, so we'll include it there as one of the banners. That's typically one of the best ways to get the message out, and then we'll also use our social media channels to promote it. And I think Jonathan was planning on sending, once we have the press release sent out, we can also send it directly to, um, other contact lists that we have available, including those of businesses in the Portland area.
Perfect, thank you very much. And I also note, um, that we did receive a letter from Linda Mohold this afternoon, uh, regarding this issue. So, okay, thank you, Jonathan.
Valerie?
Thank you. Um, I guess I have several questions, or at least three. Um, my first is where, um, where did you come up with the fifty-five employee number? I would, um, personally like to see that, um, like, the real small businesses, the people that will be affected the hardest in most cases would be helped first. And if we could set a criteria that they would get some kind of priority?
Okay, so the reason we determined fifty-five employees is we, so I have access to, um, data that most people do not, because I s- I signed a disclosure form with the state of Oregon for employment numbers in order to keep accurate count. In looking at those numbers, there are several businesses that, and I can't mention who, would be an extreme loss to the community, and, um, and they're very unique, and they're in the retail and hospitality, uh, sectors. So I went through the list. What I did was I started with, you know, the simple one hundred, and I worked my way down and looked at what type of sectors those were in. Most of them were in manufacturing, food processing, semiconductor manufacturing. And then when I started getting down into the six- And then when I started getting down into the 60s, we started hitting the retail, we started hitting the restaurants. And some of these are pretty prominent and well-known restaurants within the community that are not franchised or what you would consider chain-like restaurants. And so when I got to the number 55, that's when I hit that particular business. And then I worked my way down. And so that's how I got to that number, counselor.
Okay. And then my next question is, I'm thinking of, because of the governor's mandate today, that a lot of, well, I guess the restaurants are still somewhat essential, but what, the funding was to sustain the workforce. So what does that exactly mean when a lot of these people are already not working?
So when it, when we classified sustained workforce, we were anticipating that these businesses that are affected had the ability to continue paying their employee through this issue, and that's what we were trying to get at. So to, to that point, we wanted, we wanted to ensure that they had somewhat of a stable income, at least within the next 30 to 60 days.
Okay. And yeah, that was my, the next question is, how many, there's only the ability to give out 25 grants. So how many businesses would fall into this category approximately?
So if, if my numbers are correct with the state of Oregon, we'd have a, well, prior to today's order, we had 84 eligible businesses. After today's, after today's executive order, that would, that would probably extend to most of our retail and hospitality sector.
Okay. And then I, we were told where the funds came from, but I wondered if you'd go over that again. And then I wondered if, I mean, we're making a decision on this, but could those funds be used for other things to help within the city? Or is it limited to this?
That's, that's a good question. So the funds that we are talking about tonight are from Urban Rinald, which is entirely governed separately by, or the Oregon revised statutes. But within the Urban Rinald chapter, there's a subsection that allows for urban rural agencies to provide grants to assist businesses within their community. That's not necessarily restricted. These bonds are technically considered non-tax increment, which can be used in accordance with Oregon revised statutes 457, which now getting too in the weeds, this program applies to. On the other side, non, or excuse me, on the other side, tax increment revenues can only be used within an urban rural district and for capital projects.
That's all my questions, but I just want to say you must have put a lot of work into this in a short time, and thank you.
I had, I, we, I had good help with the people that Sherlin listed, Sean, Don, Aquila, and.
Bridget, do you have a question?
I want to thank you too for all your work and everybody that worked together to help our small businesses and think about that. I want to say just from the onset, that because of exactly what you said, it's specific to businesses. And I don't think we've had this conversation since we've opened up this unique meeting about this unique situation that we're in. And so I just want to say that the city has done a very good job on making sure that we're doing social distancing and now staying at home, making sure we're trying to protect people and make resources available to everybody. And I'm just really sensitive to that right now, just with how the conversation's going about who gets help and who gets tests and who gets, who gets, you know, help during a time where a lot of people feel scared, where there's a good reason to feel scared, where some people might be having defense mechanisms that include denial and all kinds of other things. So I just want to be really mindful about how I approach this. And I appreciate you explaining how, where this money comes from, how it helps our small businesses, what kind of criteria we're looking at. And some of my questions were some of the help that is available to small businesses, pools of money from the Small Business Association federally, grant money towards small businesses and unemployment help for people that are dealing with unemployment, that there are other benefits, different types of benefits. And I'm just wondering if grant criteria has anything about duplication. The other thing that crosses my, I'm going to ask like three questions in a row. And then the other thing that crosses my mind is if there's ways of using this money to help businesses that are doing social good right now, especially things that might include helping first responders and medical staff with need. If there's anybody that's interested in retooling or doing things to change focus to help the immediate need because of the crisis that we're facing. That's something that I was thinking about around this. And then the third question that I had was, again, around criteria, not necessarily how long you've been in the community, but you know, based, you know, is it, is it based on need? Yeah.
So I'll try to answer, and if I miss your, if I miss a question, counselor, just let me know. So grant duplication, and at this time, we don't factor in another business getting either a Small Business Association loan or some sort of grant from a local nonprofit. It would be maybe moving forward, and if we did this long-term, to keep that at a forefront of question that we may need to pose, but at this time, we don't. To helping businesses doing social good. So the good thing about that is if there are businesses out there, like a restaurant that's currently serving our first responders or providing meals for the vulnerable populations, but they're employing their workforce, they definitely would probably have higher rankings in the criteria for, because they're meeting not only the need of the broader community, but they are still meeting the general criteria of this program. How could we help change the focus to the immediate need? It would be hard for us to manage that kind of program in order to, to be honest with you, it's just me, and then there'll be a committee in addition to myself on approving these loans. So it may be a little bit more difficult to maybe tackle that issue right now. But it's certainly something that we can definitely consider moving forward, at least in a discussion phase. And then is it based on need? So part of the application process is they actually have to provide documentation showing how they've lost revenue or they've lost income due to COVID-19. And that's an actual federal regulation. And I can send out links to that later. And that's based on the Seattle and Beaverton's model too. So we can't just freely give out money without knowing where this money's going or what actual income is being lost. So we actually do require that information. And since it's a reimbursement grant form, they also have to show due diligence in their payment of their bills. And then we can come in, they've notified their need, they've showed their need, and we can reimburse that pretty quickly.
Thank you. And I had one other one too. There's, we're also thinking about things like nail salons and massage, those types of folks. They are not allowed to work right now.
Yeah, they're completely shut down.
Jonathan, another question.
This goes, am I still talking?
You were.
Oh, sorry. So, so it goes beyond, just right, it goes beyond restaurants to all different sorts of small businesses that are impacted specifically at this time. Right?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So Jonathan, question, is this, are these funds specifically used for payroll? Or would it be, can it be used for like maybe rent or food or something that they're, I mean, anything else, or it's, are they specifically for one nine item, for instance, like payroll? Doesn't exist, are there, can they use it for other things, like items that they've lost? Or is it just specifically to retain employees?
So the current program is proposed to maintain general business operations, so they could use it for a rent or mortgage payment. They can use it for payroll, they can use it for buying necessary supplies for their businesses in order to provide the services in which they currently operate.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, if it's okay. Thanks. First of all, I am so proud of all y'all. This is just a fantastic process, and this is a fantastic opportunity. And I am just so incredibly proud that this was able to be thought of and created and in such a quick fashion. I think this is fantastic. My question kind of goes along the line of the criteria for making the grant amounts out to the businesses. What criteria is going to help guide the amount that people will receive? Because I understand that it's up to 10,000, but you know, are there specific questions or specific guidelines that will be used to determine how much people get? I guess that would be my question.
So at this time, the first line of criteria are the ones listed. And so in my mind, the way that I'm thinking about, the way that the committee would work is, once they meet the necessary threshold of eligibility and it comes in that they only have three employees and their request is much less, we would be able to satisfy that. But in, to your point, counselor, at this time, we're going to have to really drill down on the, the ranking rating criteria based on this.
Okay, okay. So that you're saying like the number of people in their workforce would be a deciding factor? Because I mean, I could see someone with a smaller business asking for the full 10,000 because their need is so great. Is, I mean, is there some sort of a mechanism that you can pull that back? Because obviously, I mean, it would be nice to be able to give, you know, more than 25 businesses financial assistance through the grant program.
If I could jump in real quick, I think that's an excellent question that you posed. And I think we'll need to work through that as we set up the review committee. And Jonathan's got some ideas already about how we can drill, drill down and dial into that. But we haven't, we haven't got there yet, but it sounds like we'll be getting there rather quickly. So, but I think that's an excellent question for us to consider. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely. And again, I'm, I'm just so proud of everybody for this coming together so quickly. I just, proud moment.
Other questions?
Yes. So the information sheet that I have for the program indicates that the grants are going to be given on a first-come, first-served basis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So with the executive order that was issued today, I don't know if anybody parsed through that, but there are a significant number of businesses that are being added to this service order change that are no longer going to be available to operate. So my guess is, is that with our 25 business maximum at a 10,000 level grant, we're going to be overwhelmed with applications. My understanding, not only from a, you know, macroeconomic understanding of the average small business has about 27 days of cash flow to survive if no inflows are coming in. Anecdotally, I have, most of my major business clients, I've already had counseling with about, when do you start laying people off? There are federal benefits that are coming online rapidly to help backstop unemployment, while at the same time, there are also federal regulations that are requiring employers, anybody above 50 to 500 employees, to provide paid sick leave at two weeks, paid family leave at 10 weeks. And there are a number of those clients that are terrified that with no revenue coming in and expenses going out, that they have no choice other than bankruptcy. So the upshot of all this is that my belief is that we're going to be overwhelmed with applications. And if we do it on a first-come, first-served basis, those people who do not have notification of this, for whatever reason, either they're too busy managing their crises or they're not connected to the city electronically, whatever the means may be, I don't believe the first-come, first-served basis is the way to do this. I am, of course, reticent of being the person who's going to pick winners and losers in this. But I think if we've got, you know, normative differences between applicants, then those ought to be analyzed and prioritized, that, you know, who is it that has the most need? We're not asking at this point for balance sheets from anybody or anything else. We're just saying, what have you lost? Or what is your expected loss? And there may be somebody that's got, you know, $300,000 in the bank, as opposed to somebody who's working on fumes and really, really needs the money. So this isn't an easy question to answer, but how do we evaluate applications on a normative basis? It can't be, in my mind, first-come, first-served. That's, that's just simply not fair. So what do we do if we adopt this program? Do we pick those winners and losers? Do we find additional funds? For example, we've had requests from various parties to look at TLT tax that we've collected and refunding some of that to the hoteliers and those folks who are experiencing severe disruption in their business. Do we look at bars and restaurants that have been closed now for, you know, several days? Or do we look at these businesses who are subject to the most recent executive order? How do we make those choices? And is it fair to do that on a first-come, first-served basis?
May I chime in on that and your comments? Yeah, I totally agree. I can see people or business owners that understand a little bit more grant writing and that have been around a little longer, submitting their proposal faster than others that may have a difficult time understanding what a grant is for a business. I can tell you so many people right now, and at the top of my head, that will have problems submitting an application that will take them a little longer, but they have a lot of need. So maybe if we can remove that part that says first-come, first-served, because in my mind, when I read that, now that I'm rereading it, makes it seem like we have 25 businesses. And if I'm not within those 25 businesses or 80 businesses, then I'm not going to get anything. And I have need. So I feel like maybe changing the wording there and putting something like, we will review based on need and, or something that makes it more equal for other people that don't understand. And I can tell you, like I said, people that have never written a grant ever and who I will be talking to, encouraging them to submit something. But it will take a little longer writing, maybe that's not their strength and don't have anyone who can write that grant for them. So I mean, a lot of factors, and I tell you, because I, we, I write grants all the time. And some people might not have that skill. It takes a skill for a lot of people to write, even a tiny, small application grant. So, okay, is there a way you're going to be able to help? Or maybe change the wording on that a little bit?
If that's the council's direction, we'd be more than happy to make those necessary changes. And as Counselor Kellogg noted, this program was formulated last Thursday prior to today's executive order. So it greatly expanded the need and those businesses affected. I can work with the current team on drafting, to both Counselor Reyes and Counselor Kellogg's point, about a more normative process of maybe requiring additional information that shows current revenues like, current liquidity, current access to capital that some businesses may not. And to your point, Counselor Reyes, I will be available to any business that needs assistance in completing this application at any time. And we will also, at the same time of this application process, provide additional information of additional resources that are available, both at a state and federal level to these businesses.
Well, so two other things I hear, one is.
One is not first come, first served, making like an application period. Maybe we make that a 10-day or two-week application period. And then secondly, I'm interested in your feedback on the $10,000. Perhaps we make that lower? And so it opens it up to additional, it's not just limited to 25. Perhaps we lower that to 5,000 or 2,500? So it allows more businesses the opportunity to participate?
I don't, I don't think the amount is the problem here. I think it's more the first come, first served part that says on the application. And I don't want to like delay this because I really want people to start submitting their applications as soon as tomorrow, if possible. For me, it's more the first come, first served base kind of language. Because it does make it seem like you're, the first 25 people. I mean, we, we know it's, it's based on need. So it can be 8,000, 6,000. I don't think it's the amount of problem, in my opinion, for me. For me, it's more the, just if we can change that length, that part of first come, first served to something more based on need. And then we can move on. I mean, I don't want, like I said, I don't want to delay it for another two weeks for us to come back and meet. I really want this to move forward as soon as tomorrow possible.
I agree that, that, yeah, the first come, first served criteria maybe should be discarded. But I also want to, like Cheryl and said, I want this application period to be really as short as possible. So these people can get these funds and their financial needs are going to hit very quickly.
So I've, I've got a couple of things. So you've all, my question has been alluded to about some kind of scoring of the applications. Because as you mentioned, you're going to get more than, more applications that you have money for. And this is something Bridgette and I have great deal of experience with, community development block grant. So my suggestion was you're going to have to come up with some kind of scoring technique to rate these applications. Because one of the biggest, hardest decisions, as Robert Kellogg mentioned, is with community development block grant, there's only so much money. You get way more applications. And doing that scoring is the only way you can really figure out who gets the award and who doesn't, based on the strength of their application and the scoring technique that you came up with. So it sounds like people are pretty much in sync with that kind of idea and getting rid of the first come, first served. My question is, why two years? Because I know I've been, I've done several ribbon cuttings in this city, along with you, Jonathan, over the last year as mayor. And so we've got quite a few infant businesses, if you will, who've been really impacted by this, who've just barely opened their doors and this hit. So why two years?
So we included two years as one of those threshold criteria about if they were longer. Because as we all know, small businesses fail within the first five years of, at about an 80% rate. And so we figured at the two-year mark, these businesses who have been able to survive two years had probably the necessary acumen to utilize these funds in order to maintain operations. It was just a baseline threshold that was a subjective matter on my part.
Are there other, the other programs that we based this on? Jonathan was Beaverton and Seattle. Did they include something like that?
Beaverton did not. Seattle has some kind of similar language of new businesses may not be eligible.
Because my suggestion on this would be, you might remove that criteria, but put in a scoring mechanism that assigns points versus on how long they've been around. And obviously, those establishments that have been around longer will get more points versus a new establishment. This way, you know, those folks just open their doors. I don't want to deter them from filing for something because they might just come in asking for two grand.
Okay.
So I, my suggestion is remove the two-year requirement and just factor into a scoring mechanism.
Okay.
And as terrible as it sounds, I think I would hold off on awarding any grants until after that April 2nd effective date of the federal, for lack of a better word, entitlements to all employees taking two weeks of sick leave and 10 weeks of family sick leave. Because my impression, again, from my anecdotal experience, is that there are going to be a ton of layoffs before April 2nd. Because no employer who has lesser or no revenue coming through the door is going to continue to hold on to employees past that April 2nd date. And as ruthless as it sounds, if there are people who have, you know, terminated all their employees to go work on the state dole, then those aren't people that we ought to be rewarding with dollars to keep their business open. Right? Those people who are out there that are making an effort to keep their employees fed, housed, et cetera, outside of federal benefits ought to be the ones that we are looking to improve their situation. If those employees aren't being continued to be employed, then you have to wonder, what's, what's the money for?
Right.
I don't, I'm, I am confused by that one. I, I think with restaurants and things like that, if people are employed and they're not, they're not bringing any income in, if they have the opportunity of getting unemployment. And I'm not sure how they're going to take care. There's been debate, I know, from watching some of the hearings about how they're going to take care of, of, you know, tips and the loss that people face that are in service around unemployment and tips. So I don't know, in my mind, sustainability of a business, if you're going to invest in helping a business be sustainable, if they're making decisions to help themselves be sustainable and then bringing back their employees when the crisis is over, it might be a business decision that is actually compassionate. And I, I'm very strongly with Frank. I think that those kinds of things really need to be thought about and having a scoring system around how we're thinking about this as, as far as sustainability impact. And, and then obviously, the city showing goodwill to the people that operate in our community without making it, you know, incredibly difficult on them. But I think our scoring criteria is really important to think about carefully.
Right, and let's not forget that this is for operations. So it's not just payroll, Counselor Kellogg. So it's, it's operations in general. So it could be other things that, to just keep them afloat until hopefully this thing passes and we're, we get back to our normal lifestyles. And people get back to work. And so it's not just for payroll or staff. My understanding is for keeping them afloat, giving some cash flow so they can maintain the business open, right?
Right, I understand that. But I think any objective view of the commentary on this is that we're not going to be back to normal for a long period of time. We're talking 16, 90, 120 days. And if the value of decision is whether or not I give a grant to somebody who's continuing to employ people versus somebody who's not and just wants to maintain their position in terms of paying their rent or whatever it is, I'd rather support the people who are going to continue to employ people and pay wages.
I agree. But it is $10,000, so it's not, I'm sorry. I mean, I'm the type of person that, you know, I've worked with donors that we talk about impact and what's going to create an impact. And I think $10,000 might help, but it is not a lot for a lot of, a lot of businesses either. So, I mean.
So, in an effort to move things along here a little bit. So I think everybody's got their comments. And so, based on your notes, Cheryl and Jonathan, I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is take out the first come, first serve that rather than have a 10 to 14-day window of applications. And then staff will come up with the bureaucratic administrative rules to somehow score these and prioritize them based on a scoring technique is, those are the three big things I've heard. Am I missing anything?
And we'd also take out the two-year.
Yes, thank you. And factor that into scoring.
I didn't hear anything additional. I will create some kind of score, criteria that will include everything you guys have talked about, including how long you've been in business, revenue, operations, keeping employees on payroll versus just keeping the business open.
And then what about, question about franchises? Where'd you land, where we land on that?
I would love to hear a little bit more discussion on that.
Well, I appreciated the, the, you know, just because you're a franchisee, if you're an individual owner in town and you are a local business owner contributing to the local economy, you oughtn't be, you know, punished, for lack of a better word, simply for being a subway owner. If you're Joe Schmo that owns one subway in Toowolton, you ought to be treated the same way as any other small business owner in Toowolton. If you own seven franchises and have access to a line of credit, then that's, that's a different situation.
I would, I would agree with that. And I think it's the same, to just extrapolate on that, you have Ruben's, I think it's Ruben's New York, which is a store that's, and there's really isn't much difference between that and, you know, the Domino's franchise guy and the Subway franchise person. The other than one has, one pays a fee to somebody for the branding, so to speak. But I liked the rules that Jonathan had laid out earlier with respect to no more than a single location. I think that rules out, it rules out some of the bigger, well-known franchisees that we know have already publicly offered support. Burger King, for example, McDonald's. And it includes, and I know nothing, for example, about Jack in the Box or Carl's Jr., but my guess is they're part of larger chains and they wouldn't necessarily qualify anyway due to the number of employees that they have. And also then Jonathan, I'm assuming that your scoring system would account for that so that we are really reaching out to those smaller businesses who really are in need. And to Counselor Reyes's comment about impact, to a small business, you know, $3,000 or $4,000 is enough. And I think, for example, of, you know, we, there's one or two small shops that I'm aware of in the city where they only employ three or four people. And they have a physical presence, they actually have a storefront, they actually sell something. But there's only four employees. And so to that extent, 2,500, that's a couple of weeks' salary for some of those employees. They're, you know, they're paying a minimum wage, a little over minimum wage. And that's going to help them a lot. Or, and/or, as mentioned earlier, the rent. So I like the outline that you gave earlier. So I think Valerie had her hand up.
Oh yeah, I just want to say on the franchisees that I, even if they only have one, that somehow that scoring, like I think Counselor Morrison alluded to this earlier, that some of these, even if they're big national chains, that some of them will be helping these individual franchisees. And then some of these corporations will not. So that should just be considered in the scoring system.
Nancy?
Thank you. I, I kind of go along with what Counselor Pratt is saying. I think, I think asking for the applications, I think we can be a little more, not want to say lax, but I think we can have maybe fewer hurdles asking for the applications themselves and be maybe less prescriptive about like exactly how many franchises, locations you can have in the city. Because I think when you get to the second round of questions, like what Counselor Kellogg was talking about, you'll start to get into a little more of like the financials of the business. And I'm sure one question is going to be, you know, do you have any ability to get, you know, financial assistance from a corporate entity or a franchise, additional franchise entity or something like that? So, I mean, I think we could weed out multi-location franchise businesses that could get money from their mothership through the second round of questions and not necessarily have to weed them out of their initial grant opportunity, if I'm saying that right, if that makes sense.
Makes sense.
Rather than trying to like get the perfect wording of, we can have two, but not one, but not three, but not here, and be a little bit more open and then we'll catch them on the second round and we start talking about assets and opportunities and resources. That's what I would think.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I agree with.
Nancy?
He went to mute before he finished.
She's in box number three of the Brady Bunch over here.
I was going to say Council President Grimes, there was just too much to say in a meeting that's going along.
That's okay. So, wanted to remind you, just in case you forgot me.
And I want to stress that, you know, and Cheryl and you can verify this. We had a very somber conversation on Friday. But I do not believe that this is short-term. I think we're looking at long-term lasting economic effects. President of the St. Louis Fed said he expects 30% unemployment by the end of the second quarter, GDP to drop by 30%. And so, you know, these are all terrifying things. And if we're going to assist local businesses, I don't think we ought to do it on a knee-jerk reaction. But instead, you know, look at who are the businesses with the most need that provide the most benefit to local employees and really make a normative judgment on this. And I know that's, you know, a survival of the fittest argument that not a lot of people are going to be happy with. But if we're going to make the most difference, I think we have to pause for a moment and see what some of the after-effects here are. That this is going to, there's going to be a long tail on this thing. And so in terms of scoring and developing the criteria about how we award these grants, we need to be sensitive to the fact that some of these businesses may not survive another 30 days. And nobody wants that, but that seems to be the stark reality.
So, if, if I could further that question, I guess, are we, is our goal with this to help the businesses in the most need? Or to help the businesses that we think have the best chance of surviving through this downturn?
Yes, question.
That, I, that was not the, that is a great question, but that was not the question that was considered during the program formation.
So what was the question that was considered?
So Jonathan, you, what was the, we modeled this after Beaverton and Seattle. So how, how did they approach it?
So Seattle has the similar output that we have, which is the program funding that employs the most people, that retains the workforce or stays in place. So a business that keeps its storefront. Beaverton is entirely only storefront operations. We've kind of merged those two programs together. Beaverton, too, I think in answering that question was, how do you have the shortest impact? Or, excuse me, how do you have the greatest impact in the shortest amount of time? And that's kind of the model that I was following with this program, was how can the city make the biggest impact immediately through any type of program? And so I took that and then I merged the Seattle because they actually have done pretty good work with mitigation of their issues with the coronavirus impacts on their economic landscape.
So I guess I'm back to the question of by the, the greatest impact, how do you define that? Like, are we talking in the shortest amount of time of, I'm just trying to process out loud here, sorry. But I'm, I'm just trying to think how you would define that. Like if you had, for example, a bigger business with a lot of employees as opposed to a business with four employees, how would you weigh your criteria on who would get the funds, other things being equal?
So one of the criteria, excuse me, one of the application questions that we would pose So one of the criteria, excuse me, one of the application questions that we would pose is, do you have access or what is your current cash flow ability? And so while a small business may sell a, and I don't want to get into specifics because I don't want to assume anything on a small business, but if a certain business with a certain number of employees produced a product that was much more profitable and employed less compared to a business that has been around longer, that is a normal business but employs more, we were going with the automatic assumption that the business that had a storefront and employed more would be the greatest impact with the greatest need if they didn't have access to capital or cash flow.
Okay.
All right, so we've got the changes that have been requested to the verbiage of the details of the resolution. So how do people feel? Do you want to vote on this and with the changes requested, are you ready to vote or no?
So the, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I don't know who you're talking to, Mayor, I apologize.
Nancy?
I said, sorry, sorry Jonathan, I just one more quick question. Prior to the grants being approved and offered to the businesses, will they come back to council so we know who's getting what and we can vote on it? Or will it just be an independent, Frank, you're shaking your head, or is it going to be like an independent process where?
It's supposed to be quick.
Well, I was thinking like we could have a special meeting or something. I just didn't know. I'm, that's because I'm asking, is this going to run independent of us and that's to make it faster, more flexible?
That was the original idea was to set up a little internal committee and to put this, to stand this up and then to get it out the door. Of course, you're the policymakers, you can decide otherwise. What I might, as a middle ground, might suggest that at the next council meeting, we could provide a report.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to follow the process and see how the, the grant recipients, who they are and how they are. I mean, I'd love to see that, but I definitely don't want to hold anything up. I do want to say that.
All right.
And I'm more in favor of holding things up just a bit. You know, it's not a, like I said, survival of the fittest, but in terms of the most need, that's only going to be expressed over the next few weeks as receipts come in or they don't come in. And there are businesses that have greater need than those that don't.
Right.
And I just want to say that, a reminder you that the, we're talking about making the greatest impact in the shortest amount of time. So in my opinion, we should do this process as quickly and effectively as possible in the shortest amount of time.
And I'm, I'm anticipating, you know, Jonathan and staff, it's going to take some time to come up with questions, criteria, scoring, the receipt time. So if we do a window, you're talking at least, say if we give 10, 14 days, in that meantime, staff is coming up with the questions and ranking and scoring. So awards probably won't go out for another two weeks anyway, correct?
Correct.
So through Counsel Kellogg's point, you know, as things evolve over the next two weeks, you know, applications will still be rolling in and the impacts over the next two weeks. You know, if more businesses are impacted, they can get their applications in. They will have a better idea what's going on in the economy as time goes by here. And when the voting and scoring takes place, it's not going to be for at least two weeks.
Well, that's my understanding that.
Yeah.
Sorry, my understanding is that we're voting on this today, so it can go in, it can be open tomorrow as soon as more, as tomorrow morning, and then maybe wait, I mean, start getting all the applications and then award based on people submitting their, because they're awarded based on submitting invoices, right? Or show lack of, you know, show that they have had some kind of impact.
We should probably give Jonathan a day to come up with criteria, though.
I will say that this, because of how the calendar falls, so March is a five Monday month. So we have, instead of two weeks till the next council meeting, we have three weeks till the next council meeting. So it, I mean, even if we got the criteria and the application process all done by this week and had it opened up at the end of this week and gave people 10 days to do by like the sixth, the seventh, I still think we can come back with a report to the council and, but get it going. If that's the will of the council, but we do have three weeks between now and the next council meeting.
But we can always call a special meeting with 48 hours notice.
Yeah, yes, we can, which will allow us plenty of time to figure out a date. Listen, I, I don't have a problem with the way Jonathan is setting this up. And again, I, I think from my perspective, at least from where I'm, I'm coming from, I look at what Jonathan, you have done in your time here and the outstanding work and the amazing connections you have with the community, that I don't have a problem trying to look over your shoulder and trying to second guess who your grants are going to be to. And I agree with the city manager, you know, and agree with Council President Nancy Grimes, that a, a report, a follow-up, so that we are, because I would like to know too, I want to know who it is. You know, and, and certainly I'm sure some of the stories, stories are going to become very compelling and with their permission would, would make for, you know, a, a something down the road in terms of a celebration when the time's appropriate. Although I also agree with Counsel Kellogg, this is not, this is going to be survival of the fittest. You're looking at a long, long road before this thing turns around. And so, but I, I think to a small, again, going back to my earlier comment, to a small business, and I can think of, you know, I think of, for example, and again, I, these are just businesses I know, but I have no idea what their financial situation is. But I think of a small business that is operating in one of our storefronts that only has three employees, this can make a huge impact. And, and in light of what Congress is attempting to do and their slogan, we would be in a position to help them now and then hopefully down the road, they're getting additional help from the federal government. And then, as was noted earlier in our meeting and by a letter sent to Frank last week, there are some other ideas floating around where there might be some additional funds. Again, I don't want, I don't want to discuss that tonight, but this is, this is something I think gives a shot in the arm to somebody, gets them, helps them. And, and I have full faith in staff to be able to come up with the criteria and the, and the, and the appropriate way to do this. And I do believe though, that the faster we can make this happen, the, the opportunity for someone to survive, I think, is, is greater.
All right. Want to make a motion, Paul?
Fine, if I can find it here on my schedule. So we are looking at, Frank, I can't, Resolution 616-20? Oh, is that the, that's the, no, that's the wrong one, that's the 12.
Yeah, 5487-20.
5486.
Five.
I have number three.
Yeah, it's easy for you to say. I'm sorry, what was it? The resolution number again?
5487-20.
Five, okay, and move that we approve Resolution 548-20.
5487-20.
Thank you for the correction.
In a second.
I have a motion in a second for us to approve Resolution number 5487-20. Any discussion on the motion? I'll do it by rolling in, but what?
I was just saying, you said discussion on the motion?
Yes.
I, I just, I don't, I, I, I'm with Counsel Morrison, should go out as soon as possible. And I just want to make sure that it has the, that what we discussed about the language of first come, first served, all that has been, will change.
Yep, I think Cheryl and Jonathan's got that.
Yeah, I don't see how we can pass the resolution.
Yes, we got that, we heard that direction, thank you.
What those requirements are going to be. I mean, I, I absolutely appreciate that this could be fundamental to some businesses surviving, but we just talked about, you know, adopting something where the criteria is now changing. And so I don't know how we can adopt a resolution to provide funding without knowing what the criterion for that funding is going to be.
Aren't we leaving that to Jonathan to, yeah, flesh out?
Well, no, I mean, we have, we have the resolution in front of us that's got the attachment, that's got the first come, first served language in it.
No, the resolution does not.
Remember, this resolution is given, we're awarding authority to the TDC.
Okay, so then we just kick it, we, we kick the can down the road for about 20 minutes where the TDC meeting is going to be what the conditions are on the approval.
No, no, the, the same thing, that resolution.
If the idea is that we're going to pass this to give further detail on the TDC adoption, then okay, I'm fine with that. But I, I think we're birthing kind of a half-borne baby here unless we put that criteria in place.
Now, the resolution that is coming later just authorizes the city to, it's, it just authorizes the, because everybody, well, anyway, you guys can't read it, but it, there's no, and actually, this is a very interesting point that Counsel Kellogg brings up because the resolution doesn't have anything in it with respect to the terms that Jonathan outlined in staff report. I'm assuming that that's, that, that we're all okay with that, but Counsel Kellogg, if you need those terms in the resolution, I'm, I'm thinking Jonathan can add that, you know, a section. There's only three sections in the resolution and I'm assuming you can add those sections. But I'm comfortable with, with staff's understanding of our direction.
Well, I mean, at this point, if the vote on the resolution is to allow further discussion to the Development Commission in terms of implementing criteria, then yes, I, I, I am for the program in principle. But in terms of specifics, I think we have more work to do.
Aquila?
I'm just going to throw this out, this idea out there. If you'd like to take a short recess, I think we could type up those changes that, that you just suggested and share that on a screen.
But I, I, I will say that I'm not sure that we're going to be able to come up with the criteria of how that will be awarded.
Sure, the score.
Right. And so I, I would just suggest, I mean, you, you're the policymakers, but I would suggest we're in unprecedented times. And if your goal is to create a program that gets out there the quickest and tries to make the, the most impact, we don't, you may have to just give that quote-unquote "control" over to the staff to try to come up with some program. We can report back to you. I, I, I do my best always to communicate back with you on what we're doing and we can provide a report. Back meeting, I can, we can communicate through email and we can try to, I can provide information through email. And we can try to allay concerns over, over how we're administering the program. If you wait till a special meeting or April 13th, it's going to be, it'll delay it.
Well, I think, I think we can tackle that in the Development Commission meeting. So if the vote right now is to pass the resolution to support the program in principle, then I'm completely in favor of that.
I mean, the resolution is just delegating the authority to the TDC. That's all we're doing.
Right. And then we have a TDC meeting later to flesh out the details. So again, as I said, if, if the vote here is in principle to establish the program, then I'm 100% in favor.
Yeah, and it, and as my understanding is, it's subject to the 12th and necolite stabilization program that Jonathan created that was in the package that outlines business eligibility, program operation with the changes that we previously discussed. There are one, two, three, four, five business eligibility requirements on there. We removed one of them and there are four program operation requirements and we've removed, well, actually, we've removed two of those. We're not going to know, we're not going to give an award grant within two weeks.
Yeah, but Paul, that's not what we're voting on right now. I hate to interrupt.
I know, but, no.
All we're voting on is authorization of the program and we'll do details in a subsequent matter.
Correct. I'm just addressing your earlier question, Counsel, that you were concerned about what was in the resolution. And my point is, the resolution, both this one and the business, 12th and Business Development Resolution that we're going to look at later, neither one of them has a criteria. They all are, are outlined in the staff report. So.
Right. So, so we'll, we'll, we'll get to the details in the TDC meeting, but in terms of authorizing the program as a general matter, I believe that's what's up for vote right now. And so in that context, I'm going to move for adoption of Resolution 5487-20.
You already have a motion in a second.
Yeah, we had discussion of motions, got a vote right now. So let's start, Counsel Brooks. Can't hear you, Bridget. Can't hear you. Nope. How about a thumbs up if you just vote yes?
Right, sign language will work here.
We can't hear you, Bridget. All right.
We might have to hit star six.
No, you got it.
Did I have it now?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Well, my, my issue, I have a very strong opinion about this. We had a discussion as a council right now. We had direction that we gave. I appreciate your concerns. Is it still on?
Yeah, we're here.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate your concerns, Robert. And I feel like there's a general consensus around the direction that we talked about. So I just want to be really clear that we, that we stay the course on that. And, and that whoever represents us in committee sticks with what we're talking about here right now. But with that, yes.
Counsel Pratt?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Grimes?
Aye.
Counsel Morrison? Sorry, yes.
Counsel Kellogg?
Aye.
I vote aye also, so the resolution is approved. All right. So next item up is item number four, consideration of Resolution number 5488-20, declaring a local state emergency as a result of the COVID-19, not 10 pandemic. I think that's Cheryl and.
Just really quickly, to date, we have not, I have not announced an emergency declaration. And everything we've been able to do so far is, has been without an emergency declaration. However, a number of other cities, actually, most cities in the state have passed such a declaration and it would allow us to make decisions, procurement decisions and other decisions that were outside of perhaps the government, the governor's declaration. So if the local cities in the region decided to be more, have tighter regulations than the governor's order, this would allow you to have that authority and power. Yes, and Sean worked up the, the resolution. I don't know if you have anything else to add, Sean?
I, I don't have anything else to add other than this, it's very similar to other cities that have already gone through this, this declaration.
All right, questions?
Yeah, I have a.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just was going to make a comment that I was looking at the other cities and I believe all the cities surrounding us have already made an emergency declaration.
All right, Counsel Kellogg?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with making an emergency declaration, but Section 2 gives me a little bit of pause. And not because of our current city manager, but just the general delegation of authority to spend city funds at any amount without any, you know, regulation on procurement results. regulation on procurement results. And again, Cheryl, this isn't personal to you, but in terms of granting carte blanche authority, um, I understand that, you know, we had a resolution earlier that would allow us to call emergency meetings. We can still do these things in forty-eight hours. If we're talking about spending a couple of thousand dollars to do X or Y, uh, then that's certainly within the discretion of the city manager, but if we're talking about an amount, um, that is significant, then I'd like to have counsel to play at least some sort of role, policy role, um, in terms of approving or denying that request.
I can agree with that.
So is there a, a, a dollar amount that we're comfortable with in terms of giving the city manager full discretion? I, I mean, I don't even know the context of what these expenses might be, um, and so some further information on that would be useful.
Yeah, um, so currently I have authority to spend up to, I think it's a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, and, but even up to that, we have to get three quotes over, if it's over twenty thousand, I believe, or twenty-five, we have to get, or maybe it's even less than that, we have to get three quotes. And there's procurement requirements. Um, this would, in effect, suspend that and allow us to, for instance, um, get, uh, we were just talking the other day about um, getting, um, contractor for our mowing contract or our irrigation contract if, in case we needed to get, um, someone online without going through that, the quote process, this would allow us for that. I, I don't foresee this happening. I, I feel like that I, I, I don't know what case it would happen. I'd, I'd be comfortable like striking that if you, if you wanted to do that. I don't know if Sean or Dawn, you have any other input into that?
Uh, I mean, as far as the, the purchasing rules, there's still some emergency purchasing power we currently have. Um, it requires staff to, to essentially notice the, or uh, speak to the emergency in the documentation. Um, under state law, what it would not, uh, in certain emergencies, it authorizes us to just go out and get contractors without having to go out and get, you know, uh, if it's a contract of say a hundred and, you know, forty-five thousand dollars, we actually have to go and bid that contract. That's going to be several weeks to do. And so what this would do is let's say we had such a contract and we needed that related, and this is only related to COVID nineteen, so it's not things that we, we can otherwise do. Um, i- if we needed, say, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars worth of PPE equipment for our first responders, we couldn't do that, uh, under this because we'd have to go out and get bids. Um, whereas if we authorize this, uh, that, that's where we could just go out and wouldn't have the, the constraints that are currently in the purchasing rules.
Ask a question?
Go ahead, Bridget.
Um, does, would it also cover, um, if we had a contract that we have and then, you know, people either went out of business or got really sick and we needed something, um, right away because um, the current providers were not able to do it?
That is correct.
To me, that's the big thing that I think is important.
Go ahead, you go first, Alex, because I keep going in front of you. I'll go after you.
Oh, that's fine. Um, I guess, um, if I'm understanding this right, this authority is only given to Sherilyn dur- for this short time hopefully, or the period of time during this pandemic. And if, God forbid, if something happened to Cheryl, then we'd have Dawn stepping into this role and I mean, we're, I, I just want to remind everybody what times we're in, that we have to think differently about, um, how dire things can happen so quickly in our current environment.
All right, so where are people at with the?
Paul?
I have a focus to section two.
I, I, hang on, I, I have a comment there. So the way I read section two, uh, and I refer back to, we just had on our agenda, um, I believe it, the last meeting or the meeting before, where we had to authorize a non-bid. And I, the way I interpret this, and, and Sherilyn, if you correct me if I'm, speaking out of turn here, section two just takes away that, uh, that provision and allows you to, um, do that without, uh, multiple bids, which I think you said earlier, I'm just, I want to make sure I'm clear on that. And the other thing to just clarify, the comment that, um, Counselor Pratt made, um, it's the city manager or the designee, so the city manager could designate somebody to, um, to make that. But again, it goes back to, I think, the original comment and that is, you're, it's just solely within your limits, Sherilyn, correct, of what you can order without doing a, uh, going through a time-consuming bidding process. And, and that's the way that I saw this. Is that, am I reading that correct?
Correct. That's as I, that's how I understand it, Sean. Would you?
Yeah, I mean, we, we could, we would still operate under our normal process other than we have flexibility to, uh, under the emergency declaration to not go out for bids for certain projects.
Related to COVID nineteen?
Correct.
Thank you.
Related to that.
But it removes the, but in the instance that the city manager wants to spend two hundred grand on PPE, she would have to go to city council then, because a hundred and fifty grand uh, max cap if that she has would no longer apply.
Well, and there's nothing about the hundred and fifty grand max cap in the resolution.
I'm assuming based on what Sean was saying before, that city manager has a certain dollar authority already that where she doesn't need approval from city councils when it exceeds that amount.
So just, just to clarify, you, you can set whatever dollar amounts or, uh, provisions in here that you want. This is a declaration by council. Um, and so whatever you feel comfortable with, we can either amend the language here to reflect that or strike it or whatever the preference is for the council. I'd feel more comfortable with a cap and, and I don't do that to restrain the city manager or administration of the city, but simply just as a check on that authority and, and I don't want to, um, you know, revisit what I feel are, are, are past, uh, transgressions, but you know, when we closed the library, you all got my law, uh, email on that and that decision was made without any consultation with us. And I realize it was the county standard and everything else, but as a policymaking body, I feel that we ought to have at least some oversight in terms of what those expenses are. And if that number is ten thousand, a hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, I don't know what it is, but I would just feel more comfortable, um, if there was some limit on that spending without approval from city council, albeit, uh, you know, required by a emergency meeting or whatever it might be.
Paul? Yeah, so if, the, what I would suggest then is that we change section two, amend section two, to just read that the city manager is authorized to direct uh, any necessary city funds within her authority. Um, Sean, correct me wrong, would that not then put a cap of, and I'm assuming it's a hundred and fifty, if it's something different, Sherilyn, you can clarify, um, but that would then take care of that, uh, because it would leave her with her current authority, but not required, because the intent, my understanding is the intent is that we do not go through a procurement exercise for COVID nineteen. And so would that not then, would that amendment fix that, that issue, Sean?
So, uh, if, if you add an amendment that restricts the, or puts a dollar cap on, then, then it seems that would, uh, take care of the concern.
No, it wasn't what he asked.
Yeah, I just want to say. I want to say, can, am I being able to be heard? There we go. I just want to say that, um, I'm fine with it as it is.
I can't hear you.
Nope, can't hear you.
We were hearing you fine and then you clicked out.
Are you on speaker?
Now you're muted.
Oh. I think it's good. Try.
Oh, is it now?
Yeah. Gotcha.
Huh, I just don't understand this. Um, I, I, um, I'm in favor of it as it is, just I want to say that right out loud. Um, I think we're in unusual times and, um, for the reason exactly what, uh, uh, I think there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of information coming in quickly as a healthcare person. I think decisions that we make can cost lives very quickly. Um, the library is a great example of great leadership, in my opinion, of how the city has been running. Um, and I think that, um, sometimes there may be situations that we don't know about coming down that we might want this quick turnaround. So I just, I like it as it is. Um, I just want to put it out there before we, before just a couple of people are in this debate, just because of the way that this computer situation is going. Thanks.
All right, so, um, so we got the suggestion to amend section two to put a dollar cap in there. Are people okay with that? Or you want to, I mean, I could want to move this meeting along because we got a TDC after this. We're not even, this is.
Not, not, not a dollar cap and I'll be happy to make the motion, um, that I would, uh, and it, it's not a dollar cap, section two would just be amended to within the city manager's authority.
So that, because. It's a dollar cap, yeah.
Correct, but it, I'm, I'm just trying to make it simple. Maybe I'm making it complicated by trying to simplify it. I'll, I'll, and again, that was my original question, Sean, so.
Yeah, so, so that is her current authority is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for purchasing. Exceeding that, there's a council requirement that it be awarded by council.
So is it, you're just to put a hundred fifty thousand dollar cap in there?
Well, I would recommend just put within the city manager's authority, but if you want, if, if you want to be more specific, that's fine. Um, I, I think either way takes care of the, the issue at, at, on the table.
Right.
I'm with Bridget because, I, I mean, this is a declaration of emergency for goodness sake. I'm not sure why we're trying to limit authority at a time when we're declaring a state of emergency, so, um, I'm not quite understanding the concept of that.
Well, my, the, the concept, at least from my perspective, is that we are exercising financial oversight as a council.
Yeah.
I understand that, but, um, isn't that something you're kind of somewhat waving at a point of, when you're declaring a state of emergency?
No.
Yeah, I, I, I side with, um, Robert on this. I, this is going to be a very long, scary, drawn out, financially devastating fallout from this COVID nineteen and I think every dollar we spend, we are going to be held accountable for and that goes whatever we spend under an emergency fund, whatever we spend in regular funds, two hundred fifty thousand dollar business bailout fund, I mean, every dollar is going to be scrutinized and it ultimately falls back on us and it's our responsibility and I just don't think that we can be too careful right now with every dollar we have out there and it's in, yeah, it's absolutely not in any way, shape or form a personal question of eligibility. I just think we need to just, you know.
I guess my question would be in a, a terrible scenario where we had, um, um, maybe say it's two hundred thousand dollars of something that we could procure that would save lives, but we have to get it within hours. We're going to have a forty-eight hour notice and then have a meeting and then decide and let people die. I mean, we're, I, I, I just, I understand the fiscal responsibility part of it, but I, I just, I'm having a difficult time with the, um, if we're declaring a state of emergency, why we're, um, kind of putting limits on that.
I think it involves context. I mean, what, 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 what are you going to spend more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on? Is it latex gloves?
Ross, it could be, it could be ventilators to save people's lives. It could be.
Yeah, but good luck finding any of those.
No. With, with, with all due respect, and so we can move this along, I, the way, and again, and I said this earlier, I'm going to repeat to try to be a little more clear. Section two, I do not believe gives the city manager a, a, a blank check. I believe it, it, the way that that is written, it leaves within her authority and her authority, as we've now discussed, is a hundred fifty. And again, that's, I guess, in a, in a, in a long format, Counselor, what I'm asking Sean about is, is that, is that correct? Or does that need to be amended so that it's more clear that it's within her authority?
Yeah, the language of section two says redirect any necessary city funds for emergency use. There is no limitation on the amount of funds. It is any necessary amount of funds.
Well, and then I guess my second question to Sean would be that, was that your, your intent when you wrote it or was your intent to leave it within her, you know, her current authority? I mean, what was, because you're, you, I'm assuming, sorry, I'm, I'm assuming that when you wrote this, you wrote this in, in the context of talking to Cheryl and talking to the rest of staff about, you know, what would come up and, and what might be necessary. And so what, what, what's the background on that then?
Yeah, so in emergency management, you often get these declarations, uh, so that it fleet, uh, gives flexibility for, um, the, the emergency manager to make decisions about, um, whether, whether to buy equipment or whether or not to buy certain things, contracts, whatever it may be. A lot of those things have to be done quickly and they don't have the timeframe necessary to take bids out to go check with council to do all these things. And so when you declare an emergency, this is one of the things that is normally goes along with that emergency declaration, uh, whether it's an emergency for a, a natural disaster or a pandemic. And so, um, the, the, the discussion was about that, is how to give the flexibility so that we can make a, a quick decision um, to accomplish whatever it is that's related to COVID nineteen that the city needs to, to make that decision. It's also similar to, I think, identical to Gresham's or pretty close to it. Uh, identical to Ben's or pretty close to it, Beaverton's, Tygards, all of those declarations, which the city manager did, and then it was ratified by the council. In this case, it's the council. So whatever the council wants to do is, is how this is, uh, intended. So if you don't like what's written in there, we just amend it and change it to reflect whatever it is that the council wants to do.
I'm, 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 I'm going to, I'll be real quick here and let other people comment, but I, I'm really uncomfortable with this not being unanimous and I, I sense some disagreements from a couple of comments that have been made by several of the counselors, um, that we need to amend it. And so I, I think in the, um, i- if everyone, and then Mayor, I'll leave this up to you to, to kind of guide this in the direction that we need to go in, but if we, because you were one of the ones who made the comment as well, do we need to, uh, make this, uh, this change so that everybody's comfortable with it? Um, because I, I, quite frankly, I, I, I'm voting yes to the emergency resolution and I'm not, um, as concerned about section two. Again, based on the way I'm interpreting, I'm certainly, I give credence to the, to the lawyer in the room who understands this a lot better than I do. Um, but I also want to make sure this is the unanimous vote and that, you know, we're all together on this.
Miss, can I say one more time? I would, I understand the concern about fiscal oversight, um, but I would not live with myself well with having loss of life over decisions like this. And I think that when you're talking about emergency management and trying to be smarter than every other city and what they've done, I, I am not comfortable with, um, with, um, what kind of position that puts us in during these times of a pandemic that have great risk to life. Thank you.
And also I'll note for the record that, um, we lost Valerie Pratt.
I, um, have, um, Bates is in contact with her and trying to get her back on.
Thank you.
So we have to wait to, for her to come back?
You still have a quorum.
Okay. Any other comments, suggestions?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've said my piece. I think we're looking at a question. a question of whether or not financial oversight is required here, and, and I'd be much more comfortable with the spending limit. We've got the ability to call an emergency meeting within 48 hours as to Councillor Brooks' uh, concerns about, you know, people dying without the ability of the city to spend money. You know, this isn't a earthquake-type emergency where we're looking at people have died and, and we need to do emergency support. We're looking instead at, you know, what prophylactic measures can we take over time? And I think there is ample time, even given the lack of the adoption of tonight's question about when we can, uh, engage in emergency meetings. Within 48 hours, we can decide whether or not $150,000 or more ought to be spent on initiative A, B, or C. Um, so I would be in favor of amending the ordinance to establishing a spending limit uh, in line with the current law about, uh, city manager's authority, $150,000 and less, no problem. $150,000 and more, I'd like to have council oversight.
Well, I'm going to respond since you responded to me, and I just want to say that right now, currently, we might not be in a situation, but April 11th, we're going to be at the peak of this thing, and, um, that whole conversation may be a different thing. How we prepare today and how things may come down for us. And I don't know if this is something that will have to happen or not, but I would like for us to be in a position where if something was something that was an emergency, I think that's the whole idea of this, is that we're in a position to address life, safety, well-being. To me, it's like Maslow's hierarchy of needs, safety first, and, um, those basics and, and making sure that there's equipment, making sure that we have people covering things if people die, um, is very important. Thanks.
Cheryl has her finger up.
I, I would just say that, um, I have resisted or have been didn't see the need for an emergency order up to this point, and I, I still think that we can do everything that we need to do without an emergency order. Where I got, um, sort of convinced of an emergency declaration was when the regional mayors were talking about doing something a little more restrictive than what the governor's orders were. And so really, my interest or my, I, I became convinced of the need for an emergency declaration because of that section one. So the mayor is authorized to issue additional public safety and health orders related to this emergency. So to me, it, the issue of section two, I, I, I do not see it being an issue. I think we can do everything we need to do. It, it does provide more flex ability, but if we need to, um, exceed my authority of $150,000 and we would need to do something that, um, without going to bid, that would take two weeks, we could call an emergency session and within 48 hours, and you guys could authorize that. I, I don't see that as being a problem. It would provide more flexibility, but I, again, the only reason that I was convinced to bring this forward was, um, in case that the regional mayors were interested in a, in a more restrictive local declaration.
And for the record, I am with, um, I agree with Councillor, uh, Brooks. I think that life sometimes is, uh, takes precedent over, um, you know, policy, and I know, I understand policy. We're here to oversee the funds, but I also feel that, um, if anything should happen and 48 hours is, it's going to be too long to wait to make a decision. I think that if I trust the people we have right now and, um, the decision, that the decision they will make at the moment of that emergency will be the right one and to save lives, and then we'll work with the rest afterwards. Um, so that's, that's where I stand right now.
Thank you. So, I mean, we can either leave it the way it is or modify it. So who wants to make a motion?
I make a motion to, well, I, I would, I'd make a motion to have it how it is, and I have to find the.
That's it.
What is it? The, uh.
Resolution 5487 dash 20.
Yeah.
Sorry, wrong one. 5488 dash 20.
5488 dash 20. I make a motion to.
Motion to adopt resolution?
I mean.
I want to get this moving along because I don't want to be doing this all night. All right, I have a motion to adopt resolution 5488 dash 20 as written.
Second.
I have a motion as second to adopt resolution 5488 dash 20 as written. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I, I have, I have a question, um, specifically, Councillor Kellogg, do you want to make an amendment to that?
Yeah, I'd love to.
Okay.
All right, so I'd move to amend section two to provide city managers authorized to direct city funds in, uh, the amount lesser than $150,000, uh, for these emergency uses.
Second.
I have a motion as second to amend resolution 5488 dash 20 to, uh, limit the city's manager's authority on a spending cap. Um, I guess I got to do a vote. Uh, Councillor Brooks?
Nay.
Councillor Reyes?
No.
Councillor Grimes?
Aye.
Councillor Morrison?
Yes.
Uh, Councillor Pratt?
No.
Uh, Councillor Kellogg?
Aye.
And the mayor votes no. So what's the vote on that?
Four three.
Four three.
All right, so amendment fails.
Okay, I resubmit my amendment. I mean, my motion to adopt resolution 5488 dash 20.
Second.
I have a motion as second to adopt resolution 5488 dash 20 as originally written. Councillor Brooks?
Aye.
Councillor Reyes?
Yes.
Councillor Grimes?
Aye.
Councillor Morrison?
Yes.
Councillor Pratt?
Yes.
Councillor Kellogg?
No.
The mayor votes yes, so it's six to one. All right. What's that?
Oh, nothing. I said we, moving on.
Moving on. I'm going to recess this meeting or pause it, uh, so we can get to the TDC and wait for council communications because I have a feeling it's going to get late, and we might have to, uh, pass on council communications tonight. So let's go ahead and flip over, and so we're going to recess the 12th City Council meeting of March 23rd, and I'm going to call in to order the 12th Development Commission meeting of March 33rd, 2020.
Frank, can we take a quick five minutes?
Yeah, take a quick five-minute, like, bio break before we come back.
All right, is, uh, Bates there at this, at the poll center still?
I am.
You want to do that?
It's super fast.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so we'll come back at.
45.
Uh, what is it? It's 9:40 now, 9:45.
No later than. Gotcha.
Kick it back. I'm going to kick it back off at 9:45.
Hi, yeah, I, I see you, but I didn't see your audio.
I can't, I can't hear sound.
Well, I can see your picture, and it's pretty stuttery there.
Why I have 8% power?
Oh, yeah, no worries.
Is there a way for me to connect?
Uh, you can try. You'd have to close out on your Galaxy and, and try logging back in with your computer. Okay, and let's hang up and call me back if you don't get audio.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you to whoever suggested the bio break.
It's going to be easier.
Maybe on the speakerphone. No worries. Here you go. I see your picture up there, so you're represented, but, uh, you'll be on the phone next to the machine.
Okay.
All right, let's go ahead and get started again. So let me bring my agenda back up. So we left off, we're convening the March 23rd, 2020 12th Development Commission meeting. We just finished calling this back to order. Uh, at this point, public comment, I don't believe there's anybody in the poll center to provide public comment at the TDC, correct?
Correct, nobody's here.
All right. Uh, tonight, we have a consent agenda made up of one item. Uh, item number one, consideration or approval of the 12th Development Commission meeting of January 2020. Anybody want that removed from consent?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read. Second.
I have a motion as second to approve the consent agenda as read. All those in favor, I got a roll call, sorry. Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner, yeah, we are commissioners. I did the right flip. Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
Commissioner Grimes?
Aye.
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison?
Yes.
Commissioner Kellogg?
An emphatic yes.
And I vote yes also. All right, moving on. General business, item number one. Consideration of resolution number 616 dash 20 of the 12th Development Commission, establishing an economic stabilization program for businesses impacted by COVID-19 and authorizing the administrator to administer the program. So we had a discussion in city council about, uh, some of the changes we'd like made, um, to the, uh, qualification standards, and we talked about scoring and a few other things. If you want to continue discussion.
So I have a question. Does, do, do we want in the resolution the points of Jonathan's, um, memo? Or are we comfortable with the resolution the way that it is?
I'm comfortable approving the resolution and letting city staff do their job and come up with the, uh, bureaucracy, the procedures, the standards, the scoring. I'm sure Cheryl, Cheryl will report back to us how it's going and let us know if there are any issues, but I trust staff to come up with this program, but that's just my two cents.
No, I, I agree.
Just to clarify, so the resolution is very, uh, flexible. It just establishes the program and gives authority to run it. Um, I would suggest if you're okay with that, and I, I hear that there may be some more discussion on that, that, um, we can, um, continue to, we will communicate with you about the implementation of of that.
All right, then, um, do you want a motion there?
I'm assuming Commissioner Kellogg has something to say.
Yeah, I prefer that, that, that we actually make specific direction to get rid of the first come, first serve language in the attachment, uh, and that we develop criteria in line with the comments from the council earlier uh, about what businesses that might provide the most, uh, economic impact locally, uh, as well as, uh, those who have laid off employees versus those who have retained them through these difficult times. It's difficult to gauge what the virtue might be, but I think this ought to be a virtue-based system that, that. those businesses that are making the effort to survive ought to be rewarded.
Okay. Jonathan?
So during the short interim break that I was able to have, I actually reached out to both the city of Beaverton and the city of Hillsborough, and luckily I got in touch with both. There are two different models that they implemented. So Beaverton wanted to do the quickest impact at the fastest rate, and they never really had a specific set of criteria in which they were basing it off of. So what you see online is basically what they were applying for. The city of Hillsborough is giving priority to businesses that are forced to close. Priority, they determine what priority businesses they wish to fund, a type of business, the number of business locations. They even had a section in the application, how does the business intend to use the grant funding? Um, or to showcase their need, and the size of grant requested, we did, to be honest with you, council, I didn't put that into the original consideration. And then also, is a business locally owned franchise, or is a business a locally owned franchise of a chain? So there's two different models. Beaverton, they wanted quick and immediate. Hillsborough, according to my email, the reason, they had applied $500,000, they shut down the grant application within three days of launch because they had doubled the request.
Yeah, I don't.
So so to council, excuse me, Commissioner Kellogg's point, if we put that stuff into the criteria application, and then also do something similar with what is the grant funding going to be used for, I think that could likely concern.
And if I may, I would suggest that, you know, this program was developed in the context of the restaurant industry closing because of the previous executive order. So an amount of money was set aside that I believe was envisioned to support at least 25 local businesses at the level of 10,000, or maybe more businesses at a lower level. That money's been set aside, that decision was made, the money's been appropriated. I suggest that we limit this first grant application round to those businesses that were affected by the previous executive order. We couldn't predict what happened today with additional businesses being closed. I understand there may be additional funds available from the TLT tax in terms of providing that or appropriating that, and maybe from other places. So my suggestion would be that we look at this grant cycle as to that first round of businesses, restaurants and bars that were closed by the previous executive order of the governor.
Well, I just want to also remind too, there's nail salons were forced to close, gyms were forced to close. Huh? That's been going on since hasn't?
Only today were they by virtue of a governor's order declared closed. Only today.
I understood that they they were asked to stop operating a while ago. Maybe it wasn't under, from what I understand, they were not supposed to be operating. Same with dental offices to preserve PPE, which there's some things around the common good. So I just wanna, you know, those, those kind of businesses also employ a lot of people and women, and I just want to think about that.
Yeah, and they got, Councilor Brooks, my only comment is they got hit today, whereas the restaurants and bars have been suffering now for a week plus because of closure, and all those that are my constituents that I talk to, takeout orders are nowhere near the level of supporting existing, existing staff or overhead costs.
I, I agree, and I also know that places have closed, that we're doing nails, gyms, and those kinds of things have also been closed, so I just, I don't want to put out information whether there was an order or not. They were not supposed to be operating, so anyway, I just want to say that for the record.
Commissioner Grimes?
Thanks. I hear what Commissioner Kellogg is saying, and I can definitely see the wisdom in it, but I, I don't agree with doing it that way, because I do think that there are businesses that got caught up in the first order for a myriad of different reasons, and I don't think that they are any less needy than the ones that are caught up in the second round or called out in the second round, and I really don't want this quarter of a million dollar fund to just sort of be only directed to the restaurant industry, because I think we're, not that they're not hurting, and I totally understand that, believe me, I understand that personally, but I just, I don't want to, I don't want to narrow the funnel like that. I think if they end up rising to the top as being the most needy, then that's going to come through the criteria that Jonathan and the staff are going to work on, and I don't think that we need to narrow it off the top at all. I, I don't feel good about that, but I do think that the most needy, the cream will rise, and it will be very obvious when the applications come in.
Well?
Yeah, just to follow up on Council President Grimes' comments, the nail salons that I'm familiar with, a week ago, closed their doors because nobody was coming in. The Aladdin cleaners, they're still there because it's basically an owner-operator, but she's doing no business at all. The people just stopped coming in because they no longer need to take their shirts to the dry cleaners, because they're not going into their office anymore, since they were all told to stay home. Some, as long as 10 days ago. Just for example, US Bank had a directive of work at home that is now almost two weeks old. Wells Fargo also did the same thing. Both have a presence here in Tuolumne, so it's not just the restaurant business, it's the cleaners. I mean, the list is endless, and I don't want to, again, going back to Council President Grimes' comment, there's a lot of businesses are, and I have faith, again, as I said earlier during the council meeting, that Jonathan Taylor with his connections and his integration into the community will be able to set up a scoring system and get the funds out quickly to those that are most in need.
It might be helpful to hear from you of what your priority is. For instance, just from personal experience, Doshia, which is a hair salon at Bridgeport, they laid off all their employees, and they are, but their employees are able to apply for unemployment. So as it comes to a company like PF Chang's, which might not apply in this case, but they're doing takeout, or Zumiez that is doing takeout. And so they haven't laid off everybody that are, that can apply for unemployment. What about like a manufacturing company, a small manufacturing company in our industrial area that decides to try to keep it going? And they're not laying off employees. So it might be helpful to hear from you what, what the priority might be.
I'll say something. I, I don't feel, I think it's about sustainability and also having jobs to come back to. So I think it's about public good and helping our businesses that are here, and I understand, I don't want to see people unnecessarily laid off either. At the other side of it, if there are health risks to employees, sometimes you have to lay people off, and these kinds of monies can help a business stay in place, so when people are ready to come back to work, there's a job to come back to. So I, I don't, I see it very differently than some of my other folks on here, but I don't, just because I'm talking about those particular things does not mean that I do not care about bars and restaurants and people that are trying to keep people employed. But if there's an opportunity to say, stay in business, and there's a business plan that shows why this money would help them be sustainable and keep their footprint here in Tuolumne and keep people employed, I think those are the kind of markers that are best to look at, and I think there's so many different kinds of businesses in our community that have been impacted, and so many of our workers, and we, we all will be frankly, so. And in just a reminder too, that there's some, there's going to be other programs coming with mortgage deferring, with small business loans and other things like that, so I think also to let the businesses know of the other programs that they might also be able to apply for while we're doing this, and use it as an opportunity to also reach out about the things that we know from the state and federal and county levels is another really important piece, like the, there's also a voucher piece. So those are some of the things.
Right. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to go back to looking at the restaurant and bar industry as those people who have been officially closed down longer than anybody else. There are retail businesses that will close as of tomorrow based on this emergency order. There are manufacturing businesses that can stay open as long as they have somebody in place that says you have to impose social distancing, and you know, while you're cutting that piece of steel, you need to be six feet away from your fellow employee. Those things can happen. We're talking about businesses that have been for almost two weeks now, effectively limited in providing any service in their restaurant. The margins that they make over the counter, delivering food, delivering booze, all that constitutes their net revenue. They're not making any money on takeout. They have people on staff that are there to be on call, and maybe one order comes in or 10 orders come in, but they're not paying the rent. So again, I'd look at focusing this initial relief effort on those restaurants and bars that have been closed according to government law for the last two weeks, and if we decide to do another round from TLT revenue or more interest on the urban renewal funds, then we can do that for businesses that are closing as of today, but their losses are in the future as opposed to those businesses that have been closed for two weeks whose losses are present. So that's my request, that we refine the program to those businesses that have been closed, first service order as of the last governor's order, 317, somewhere in there.
Yeah, I might offer the suggestion that, you know, we talk about the scoring, you know, we talk about how long they've been in business, we might ask at a factor in the scoring, how long you've been closed? And you know, the longer they've been closed, the higher the points. I mean, they, they can come up with a system that might award those points, those restaurants and bars that have been open, I mean, sorry, closed longer. My idea I might throw out there.
I don't want to get in the weeds on scoring. I think it's an idea, these are principles I'm trying to express. You know, there's current pain and there's future pain, and those that are under current pain, I would like to service in a triage mentality, though they're wounded today.
Right, and like, I forget who said about the cream rice at the top, the people the most need, I think it was Commissioner Brooks. If you give some deferential points for folks who've been closed longer, and the people who can look these applications over, going to see the hurt, and they're going to see the restaurants and bars have been open, or sorry, been closed for a while, as, you know, in a lot of hurt.
I mean, that's how, I'm sorry, that's how I envisioned it, is that through the process of scoring the applications, I mean, obviously, the people that have been closed for 10 days, their need will be apparent, their debt will be apparent, their you know, lack of income, their 90% loss of income is going to be so apparent that those, without having to call by name categories of businesses, to me, those would just rise based on the way that their businesses have been impacted, and so that that would make them already kind of have a leg up on being good recipients for the fund without narrowing it down too much.
I, yeah, I'm a little conflicted, because even, we, we don't know, that's the thing, because some of them might have more cash flow than others. That has nothing to do with whether they were close two weeks ago, they're being impacted tomorrow, so that's, that's where I I'm trying to think about the, you know, some have more cash flow that can, you know, sustain themselves for the next, until, you know, we get some kind of federal loans or something like that. So that's why I don't want to go that direction with, you know, just having a specific industry like bars and restaurants, because I don't know that they have more cash flow than Carl, or the new partner, or the, the suits, or, you know, other industries out there. I, I would guess, when we started here, what was the integrated impact, was that was the point of the original question, so would think that if this is something closed longer, this will have a great impact on a lot of the restaurants and bars, so we'll probably talk of this, but, like, yeah, some other businesses have been also, if it's not a state mandate, they have the package for as small restaurants as possible, I would want to look at all of this, and go back to that, of what we have this impact.
So what I'm hearing is, it sounds like we're still I think Gavin and Cheryl have any mission roles we're looking for as part of the program, which is not really a conclusion resolution. So we could ask, revolution, not a revolution. And then, I think, if there's any rules, unless, if you want to put the, you got it. You got it. As far as. You can't just be here. Your impact. Uh, this is the last twenty five. This is the second one last. This is the second one. It's also the income due to. Uh, the. Pretty. Uh, the. 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 Close to. Uh. I apologize, I'm. From the. It's. It is uh. It's. Okay.
And then. National financial assistance.
So I have a. Question number six one. I'm.
Those are people left. Opportunity, once again. Admit this amendment. This program to those. Enclosed. Last couple of weeks.
With tilt. In favor of those folks.
Maybe not.
I'm assuming that's one. Criteria that John.
All right. So. Um. Discussion, I was going. Management. City management. Uh, application. Way.
Right.
If I'm a business win. From the original approach. Suggestions made today.
Okay.
Yeah. April. Just. Yeah. Yeah, we need to put. Application. And then reviewing that. Then process.
That's helpful information.
Commissioner Brooks.
Hi.
Yes.
I'm here to.
For Pratt.
Hi.
Yeah. Kellogg. I also. Anous. Number two, consider. To number six. Dash two zero. Fund loan. Tax increment district. To the twelfth. Administrative.
So Don, maybe. Interested, Don, maybe. A little information. This is necessary.
Commissioners, the. Because the money is. Uh. Fund and there's. Capacity in. Now, we would need to do. It to create. We put. Three weeks because we. Until for three. There's notice. Like hearing and so forth. But in order to. Well, now, or. Uh. To the. How. To function. And then. Come back later. Fiscal year and actually. Budgetary. Act. To officially move. And then we would. Off this loan. Make the funds available. And doing the full budget.
Any question?
Just like to understand. The repayment. Transfer that's approved. Accurate. Yeah, so we would come back. To a budgetary. And the public hearing. Then we would also. Cancel. The right place. Little tiny. On that, and that's. Yeah. Little, uh. It's money that would be in that. But it's not really going. Or it stays there, it's. Administrative. When he's available soon. Coming from the same spot. Got it. Thank you, Don. And and just to put it. All within the T D. This isn't council.
Any other question?
Move weeks. Number six ones. Twenty.
Okay.
Step ahead.
Six twenty. That already. And. One seven, uh. Number six one seven. Discussion.
Again, I just want to. I just feel. Our city staff. Up um. In that. Conversation. Um. And Sean's. Is only within the T. They probably. Nation, maybe more. But. The city council and. And that would require. Agreement between. And so how could. Own and. Ton of work. The back end. Say thank you to the city staff.
Yes.
Hey, thank you. Agreed.
All right. Commissioner Brooke.
Hi.
Commissioner Reyes. Commissioner Grimes. Commissioner Pratt.
Hi.
Commissioner Morrison. Commissioner.
Hi.
Yes, so we're. Seven dash. Push into adjourned. Meeting of.
So.
Second.
That's into adjourned. T D meeting. I'll start with Bridget Brooke.
Hi.
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner. Yeah. Uh.
Hi.
All right, I say I. So that meeting is now. Back in the session. Walton City. Of March twenty. We left off. At this point, cities. Uh. Don't need to be in the meeting. Appreciate all your work tonight. Team. We. Appreciate all the work. Grant, uh. Out of our business community.
Thank you. The path, I'll see you guys. Happy trails, Don.
So we're gonna go back. Uh, ended the community. It's now seven. I'd. Keep these very brief. Get some sleep. Especially for some. So while we start. Council Brooks.
Okay, I. I just want to say. To everybody, the first. Appreciate. Um. Council and. The in the city state. In this moment, it's. Time to appreciate it. Um, I. We are. Very much during. Know. Long time of being a there. And with health issues. Change of behavioral change. Economic stress. How. Well, how people. How you can make. Errors that. Um, results. Accidents or cutting yourself. Seconds of hand washing. I. I. Want people to. Um. And uh. That we're doing this. Is uh. Showing so. Seeing and. Uh. To. Uh, what the statement. Uh. Formation. Committees and. D C, but I. Today, I just. Had time. I just wanted. Know, I just want. We're a prior. emic, we're. And. Everybody in our community. People behind. As. People, this is the. Of a long. So. I just. Example of trying to. Everybody that's in. And um. Guys, whether I. Not, and. Um, people. Treat each other very. Be safe. Please keep distant. About what you're gonna get. If only once a week. Check yourself, be. At least if we don't have enough. There. Serry. And um. A is gonna. In the two, three. This thing is really. So. Uh. Anyway, my. My phone is open. If he has any questions. Um, questions about. Like that, please. Thank you.
Council Pratt.
One. Um. Community, I talked to. You last week with the. Schoolhouse pantry. Their um volunteer. And are able to. Got desperate need. They're doing. The um. Couple boxes. So if anybody's got a. And um. Um. Especially uh. Our um. They need the most for. Now, they've got a big. And. So if you could. Volunteer to any of. Pantry dot org. Um, go on there. Now more about. Uh, um. Stuck at home. So encouraged to give. Is people uh. At um, at risk. Or get um. They have drive. Probably. Kind of um, with. This week. Public staff that they. So, and that. Also. Quite, so if you can. Really. That. That's it.
Yeah, I just very. Give a special shout. On you and your. And all the work you. Has seemed like. Year and. Been approximately. Eleven days. Um. Has been, I think. And and I thank you. For your staff. Was shown today by the. How smoothly it went. Novel and new. Uh, the testament. That works for you. Council Kellogg.
Uh, thanks. Thank you, everybody. Long and. Enduring meeting. Some, some good. Left to be hashed out. I don't want to. What we're looking at. Uh, I really. Is not just. Um, health standards. Economic standards. Tough times ahead. We've talked about this. And. The cities in in. This, but. It goes and it's. Goes. suffering out there. Employers. And. Ability to. And so whatever fund. Will to make. Just to survive. Or just to do that. I'm proud of what we've done. Look forward to what we'll do in the.
Right. Reyes. She's still here.
She. Gone home.
She might be there. Maria?
Connect.
Mean.
Reyes, can you hear us?
My lap.
Now we can.
Hear me?
Yep. We can hear you.
Sorry. The city staff. Or um. One and and just. I'm sorry. For uh, doing. For this time, thank.
Right, thanks. So President Grimes.
Thank you. Be brief. To Bill. As said, I think. Our staff has just been. This difficult time. Them. Laudatory. Take a more, I would. For the job that they're. The way that. Of our community. To build on what. Said, I. Would love to. Even have another meeting. Next, um. To talk about. Forces. After we complete our. Of uh. That um. To the community at. Trans. Tax fund or. Where we could find. You know, more money. Incentivize. Is to stay and grow. Drive through this time. Um, then I. So in addition. Would just. Encourage. Neighbors. On the people in your neighborhood. On your elder. Um. You know, I just. How people are feeling. Hurt and alone. Isolated, right? Hopes with just. Things and I just. You know. Neighbors and. Now is is. Absolutely vital. That's what I would say. All of you guys. Love.
Thank you. Finally, uh. Want to implore. By Governor Brown. Uh. Respect here and. New restrictions. And the mayor's calls. Uh, over the weekend. Hit it by what she saw. And people. Wearing the order. So she. That people get the. Message about. Being and taking. So that we can fly. Back to normal and. Uh, some of the. Going to be in and. Deal with those. Um, I also want as. Carolyn and staff are. And dealing with. Precedent of things we. Going to deal with. So that the Washington County. Together. Huntington and have. Three times a week meeting. Discuss what's going on. That we're hearing. Info, sharing. Especially about. Becoming available. The state. Just read all the mayor. Nation. Uh, Governor Brown. Uh. Getting with us and. Meetings and. She has. Just trying to work together. To address this. We'll get through this, we'll. Through this together. Full, there will be some stuff. And try to. Needs as much as possible. These uh, funding. Loans and everything else. Multiple agencies are putting. Uh, so just want. Be positive. And uh. And. People hang in there. But. Uh. And a counselor said. Your neighbors, take care of you. And uh. Keep that social distance. But. I get through this.
First in the face. In the face of best.
Got it. That to have a. This meeting tonight. I gotta. Adjourn the meeting. Grimes.
Ready.
Council Pratt. Council Morrison. Council.
Hi, thank you, man.
Reyes.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Gates and the IT. We're putting this together. All.
Good night. Gates, thank you.
Good night, John Boy.
Woo.
I think the meeting.
Two.